At 7:30 PM in the board meeting room. Move on to the chairperson's report. Again, thank you all of those of you that have come out in person on this evening and all of those on Zoom. I wanted to start out with some recognition for two of our board members leaving our board, this being their last meeting. While both wanted no comments, I feel that it would not be in the spirit of the way our board does business. Their work and tenure also speaks for the both of them. Deb Ritchie, four years of dedicated service to our students, the board, the district, and our community. I know you've been a volunteer for almost 15 years through various parent organizations, RTMs, and subcommittees, and even more. Your focus has always been on the students and providing a safe environment and education for them. Deb always did her homework and brought the right questions to the discussion. While you will be missed, I hope you enjoy Tuesday nights off, playing paddle, more college tours, and family time and visits with your daughter and school. So, thank you, Deb, for being part of the board and for all that you've done for the board. Appreciate it. Dr. Ed, anything you'd like to add to that? Yeah, okay, good. That is you? Good. Moving on to Katie Stein. Katie Stein, nine years on the Board of Ed. I think you were a brunette when you started. Dedicated service. And you can blame Katie for her encouragement for me to get involved in the Board of Education many years ago, a conversation, I think, in our kitchen. Katie was a leader on the superintendent search committees and has served, I think, on all subcommittees over her tenure and brought each to, and brought each, and brought to each meeting, a full understanding of the facts, the issues, ideas, and solutions. Always focused on the students. With her legal knowledge and sharp intellect, Katie led many conversations on the board table. The truth is Katie likes to set the table. And without her and Four Forks, we would have been very hungry at our long superintendent search meetings, union negotiations, and retreat meetings. While you will be missed, Katie, enjoy the ability to be at the remaining high school games for CC and visiting Liv and Matthew. As a personal friend for a long time, thank you, Katie, and thank you, Deb, but thank you both very much. Dr. Ed, I'll close myself and turn it over to you.
Yes, I'd just like also to pass along my words of congratulations and appreciation to both the members, Deb and Katie. They have given themselves, they have exhibited unconditional love and devotion to the children of Darien and their hard work and devotion during the times that they've been on the board. On a personal and professional note, you're the members of the superintendent search committee and forever grateful for bringing me to this special place and for your support on the board during my transition to the district. So, again, but more than anything, thank you for all that you've done for the students and the staff here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I will move on to some comments. Well, not the end of the school year. I feel it's a good reflection point for this board, as it is the last meeting before our organization meeting on November 9th. I want to thank this board for the hard work that has been done over the course of the last year and for allowing me to be chair over the course of the last year. When I think back, no playbook and an ongoing pandemic, wind and rain always seem to be in front of us, much like tonight. That's okay. We're hardy New Englanders. We can weather any storm working together. As a district, as students, as parents, and as a board, as I've said many times, we've kept our motion going forward when you think of all that we've accomplished over the last year. While there are comments, social media, letters, and public comment about the board and how we work together, we have listened. We will continue to listen, and we will have the conversation at the board table as professionals respecting each other as we go forward. I want to thank the board for working on that all year. More work to be done? Yes. Was it easy? No. Hard work is never easy. Was the conversation difficult? Yes, at times, but conversation keeps moving forward. Did we listen as a board? I say yes. Was what we heard difficult at times from parents, students, and teachers? Yes. But listening makes sure everyone has a voice, and listening informs. From listening, we continue to move forward. Did we disagree? Yes. Who doesn't disagree? We are individuals with ideas, thoughts, and experiences. Do we agree to disagree and work towards the right solution for our students as a board? Yes. With your continued support, we will only move forward as one community with many diverse thoughts and ideas. That's what makes us a high-performing district and a place where teachers want to come and teach. This week, it's only Tuesday, has been challenging with swastikas again at the middle school and investigations around bullying at DHS. While not easy words for me or anyone to say, swastika and bullying, I feel at this point they have to continue to be said until everyone hears it and rejects it. We will continue to work on the education, community dialogue, and I know we'll all work at the dinner table conversation, that we need to help those that need help. While consequences come from these actions, understanding what people need and how we can help them takes priority also. We are a caring community. I say that after speaking with teachers, administrators, students, parents, and this past week pastors and leaders in our town, along with our first selectman, Jamie Stevenson, and state rep Terry Wood. And as one community, we can help educate, heal, empathize, lead the way, always agree to listen, and have the tough conversations. This is what we do. If you need help, anyone, just like being in a class, raise your hand. As a community, as a district, as a board, we're here to help. Thank you for listening, and let's continue to do the good work for our students as we move forward. We will move on, Michelle, to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. The facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Yeah, we'll start in person.
We'll start with Zoom or in person first?
We'll start in person. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanna Walsh, and I live at 17 Pleasant Street. This is something like the fourth or fifth version of what I was going to say tonight, and it keeps changing, not because I'm wordsmithing, but because every day, something else happens that worries and scares and disgusts me. I moved to town in June of 2014. Shortly thereafter, a new friend, upon hearing that I was Jewish, said, "Don't let anyone else in town know that." He was kidding. But that joke is indicative of the environment we now find ourselves in. The fact is that Jews in this town, in our school, don't feel safe. People of color don't feel safe. The LGBTQ+ community doesn't feel safe. People, children with disabilities, don't feel safe. They have told you this themselves. As stewards of our collective children's education, you all know that Darien believes that schools exist for children. The philosophy of the Darien Public Schools is to, quote, "work cooperatively with families and the community to provide for its students a safe, supportive, respectful, and intellectually challenging learning environment." Safe, supportive, respectful. Our most vulnerable students certainly don't feel that way, and I would venture to guess that many of our least vulnerable students even feel that way. Safe, supportive, respectful. This is not about politics. It is about children, and this learning environment is untenable. We must do better. We must take immediate action and signal to our entire community that hate has no home here. Because right now, we say those words, but our children don't believe us. Why should they? As I said earlier, they have told you themselves how unsafe, unsupported, and disrespected they feel, and our only response has been to talk about it and then wait until the next incident.
Thank you for your comments.
John Dunn, 175 Raymond. Over the past several weeks, we have heard both concerns and confusion from parents, teachers, and students over the future of our wonderful public school system. The only constant amidst this turmoil has been the administration's unrelenting drive to implement their strategic plan no matter what. This is exemplified in tonight's presentation as the administration embraces Hartford's Open Choice Program and facilitates the regionalization of our schools at the cost of local control. It is time to take a pause. Tonight, I call upon the board to temporarily halt the implementation of the strategic plan to allow all stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, administrators, and board members, time to come together to address these important issues. The only way forward should be as a united community, and to get to that point, there is much work to be done. Recently, in nearby cities and towns, we have witnessed dramatic changes to curriculums in schools. AP classes canceled in Stanford, gifted programs canceled in NYC, midterms and finals done away within Greenwich. Is this a harbinger of future events for Darien? So many of us have chosen to raise our children in town because of the exceptional school system. However, as the administration goes full steam ahead, there are simply too many outstanding questions. We need clarity. We need a pause. A key refrain from many concerned parents at recent meetings has been the desire for curriculum transparency and nonpartisan parental involvement. Regardless of one's political affiliation, increased transparency should be welcomed by all. We love our children and need to know what is being taught to them. However, of the six parents listed as members of the Strategic Plan Committee in tonight's presentation for our registered Democrats, one is a Republican and one is unaffiliated. That means that two-thirds of the parents represent a single political party, and of those four Democrats, half are running for the Board of Ed. This is the antithesis of a representative and bipartisan group of parents. Parents involved in the process should have no political ambitions or agenda. Wanting what's best for their children should be their only drive. And for all this administration's discussion of diversity and the need for varying points of view, why then does the committee have no parental gender diversity? We need transparency. We need apolitical and diverse parental involvement. We need a pause. As we take this much-needed pause, our students, parents, and teachers can turn to the plethora of SCL and diversity programs currently available through multiple community organizations, negating the need for the administration's rushed efforts to implement them in our public schools. Let's take our time to do this right with the whole community on board and united. We need a pause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Kathleen Thompson, Goodwives River Road. The administration and Board of Education, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak. Mr. Brown, we are sorry you have been a victim of a slanderous character attack. No one deserves to be treated like you have been. To Darien residents, I think you all know and would agree, this is an amazing community. So it's hard to understand why the Darien Democrats thought it okay to create such a slanderous narrative for a sitting Board of Ed member rather than take time to communicate their grievance directly with him. Their willingness to turn to social media without bothering to engage is wrong and shows a clear lack of faith in each other. Their willingness to tarnish not only a man's reputation, but our school--
Madam, I'm going to ask you to pause. This is way too political in mentioning Democrats, and it's not appropriate. This is school-focused in terms of your conversation. All right?
Okay.
So if you have something else to add that's not political or calling out Democrats or Republicans, you can continue--
I'm not calling out--
You've mentioned the word several times. It's not the time or the place to have a political conversation.
Okay, so attacking somebody in this room is not okay. Would you agree with that? Because that's what happened last week at last board member meeting, and no one, you didn't stop that. So I think, in all due respect to Mr. Brown, I think he deserves the opportunity to have the respect of a sitting board member. He's a neighbor, he's a parent, and he's been under attack, and it's not okay. Thank you.
I don't disagree with that, but you're also attacking the Democrats. So it's just not the time for a political conversation. Thank you.
Melissa Zabaki, Relyant Road. As one of the concerned parents that have been mentioned in past meetings, I want to clarify, we are not opposed to SCL programs and believe these programs have true merit. However, we do feel they can be best fulfilled outside the schools and based in the community where everyone is included, parents, children, grandparents, educators, and churches. The school administration is acting above and beyond the jurisdiction to insert themselves into a role of a parent. Furthermore, there are radical national efforts to overhaul schools happening right here in Darien. The DPS implementation of a new strategic plan and vision of a graduate is full speed ahead, but parents and taxpayers are not fully informed. When speaking to community members, there is a huge lack of awareness on the changes occurring in our schools. The drastic curriculum revamp is a result of a select group of chosen parents who are now running for office and bringing with them radical national efforts into our schools. We, as parents, got complacent, we were snowballed, and we need to be engaged. Curriculum transparency will be vital for success as you implement new and untested programs into our schools as social experiments. The current path of our BOE and curriculum committee to implement these excludes parents while you march forward. I also want to add, I have a disability, and I understand some of the challenges that that special population faces, and I think it's really vital, and I advocate on their behalf, that clarity into the agenda for them as well is crucial to their overall success and well-being. Slow down. Bring us all on board with your vision. Share the agenda. This will dictate everything going forward, from curriculum to gender identification. This is where the parents have been excluded. This is where we're asking for a pause. In the name of equity, New York City eliminated their gifted and talented programs. Other towns around us are eliminating AP courses, finals, and midterms. This is not just changing curriculum, but lowering standards. This should be rejected by all families. The gifted program in the Darien are also being reassessed. Are we next? Parents can all agree that any form of racism, racist sentiments, negative judgment, or exclusion of any kind is simply intolerable under any circumstance. We are part of a greater humanitarian effort. It's a community effort. Wanting to be informed and potentially about potentially sweeping changes to our children's curriculum is in no way contradictory to supporting our teachers. We want inclusion to collaborate, not to challenge and impede. We've been mischaracterized. Let us have a seat at the table. It's time for all sides to come together. You're excluding parents as you march forward, a body of people. We have rights by federal law that are being denied. Regardless of political party, no parent should support that. And I just want to leave you with one thing that resonates with me. This is from the Darien Parents Coach Training Program before you can be a parent coach in the community, and that message is exclusion is a form of bullying. Thank you and be well.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Excellence in education. I have many friends that have grown up in Darien, and that is the motto they all remember, excellence in education. It seems we have achieved it. Darien High School was named the number-one school in Connecticut according to U.S. News this year. Amazing. It is the reason my clients move here. It is the reason I moved here 20 years ago. So the question is why? Why would we begin to upend our curriculum and introduce sweeping changes when our system is currently working very well? The six indicators on which Darien was measured to be named number one in the state and number 100 for STEM in the country are as follows. College readiness, college curriculum, math and reading performance, math and reading proficiency, underserved student performance, graduation rate. Our AP participation rate is 69%. Our nearby towns and cities are eliminating AP and gifted programs because they are not equitable. They are doing this without parents' knowledge. Will that be happening in Darien next? No midterms or finals as well? We have all these programs now, and we are number one in Connecticut. These are the reasons we are now asking for curriculum transparency before these changes are made and the parents are left out. Many of the parents in town have no idea about the drive for a new strategic plan or how the Strategic Plan Committee was chosen. It was written during COVID when parents were underwater and focused on simply surviving. We all just received the vision of the graduate, and I would also like to know how the stakeholders who wrote it were chosen back in March of 2020 when we were headed for lockdown. How were none of us aware? Was this written by the stakeholders or an outside group that we paid to write it? The vision of a graduate is not a core curriculum. It reads as a lesson in raising our children to become kind, socially-aware citizens, which is our job as parents to teach them. I certainly do. The larger question is how are we fitting all of this new curriculum into an already exhausting seven-hour school day? What core subjects are we cutting short? How will that affect our children's education in the traditional core curriculum, which has proven to be critical in raising a successful graduate? I rely on the brilliance of our incredible teachers in Darien, who have helped us get to number one in Connecticut, to teach my children what I cannot, the core fundamentals of math, science, language arcs, social studies, and history, among others. I think we need a pause to better understand why we are rushing to make changes to a system that is already proven to be highly successful. Clearly, when we were being told there's a new strategic plan heading our way to change in education--
Kate, you're at time.
Okay, I hope we get a great deal of clarity tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I live at 6 McLaren Road South. I want to echo the sentiment of concern about what will be removed from the curriculum in order to make space for so much new curriculum. It's a very, very comprehensive plan. I don't know exactly how we're going to fit all of that into the school day. I also want to express concern for the group who was the organization who was engaged to develop the DEI curriculum changes. Connecticut Center for School Change, on their website and their mission statement, which you can go to, says, "America is a racist and classist society, and by default, schools replicate the racism and classism that has deep roots bound into our national history, culture, systems, and structures." Goes on to say, "Educational inequities are caused by racism, prejudice, and bias that disadvantage marginalized groups." So to me, it sounds like equity, which the definition is equitable outcomes, is to lower the standards to equalize results. We are seeing this in New York City with the elimination of the gifted and talented programs. AP classes were canceled in Stanford without the teachers knowing, without the parents knowing. Parents and teachers did not know, and AP classes were canceled. I'm very concerned about this group that Mr. Tramburg has ties to and was very involved with who brought into this. It seems to me like their core values are in line with CRT. We are full steam ahead. We don't know where, I mean, if this is the core beliefs that are posted on their website, I am very concerned about the current administration's core beliefs and what they are willing to push down into our curriculum. As the head of curriculum, we need to take a much closer look at this. As parents, we need to take a much closer look at this. I am also very concerned about the national cancel culture that's going on for parents being termed domestic terrorists by speaking publicly at these meetings. The National School Board, or NSBA, has recanted that statement, but the Department of Justice and the FBI have not been called off from investigating parents like myself who are speaking at these meetings. I do not believe that all of the teachers in this district feel the way that the three people who put their names on a letter to the editor feel, using the words "broken, battered, ambushed, vilified, scared, casualties, destroyed, dragging through the mud, am I going to be accosted, weapon, war, raging, protect ourselves." I do not believe that the teachers feel that the parents who are here expressing concern about our children being, for lack of better words, guinea pigs in new curriculum are threatening the teachers. We're simply wanting transparency. We want a pause. We want to be a part of this, and if an organization is hired to develop such a drastic sweeping curriculum change, I think we should vet them better.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Linda Rowe of Berenger Road, a resident of Darien for over nine years with children in elementary and middle schools. This is the first time I have addressed the board, and I thank you for the opportunity to do so. Given this town's historical public school excellence, which is one of the best districts in the country and one of the main reasons we moved here, perhaps like many, I grew complacent with the Board of Education activities. Until this year, I never had a reason to doubt the board's activities and the direction of our children's education. However, recent events have compelled me here tonight to advocate for more transparency and parent inclusion in the implementation of what appears to be a new curriculum for our kids going forward. Trying to understand the trend, I learned that the board is in the process of implementing a completely new, untested curriculum that was passed under what seems like the cover of darkness at the height of the COVID pandemic. I also learned that this new program appears to have been pushed through by a few individuals from the administration. How will it change the already proven curriculum? Please tell us the specifics of the new curriculum. The often repeated words of diversity, equity, and inclusion sound nice and uncontroversial, but they are in fact generic words and tell us nothing about the actual curriculum changes. What is the cost of this program? What are we going to have to eliminate? I began to do my research, and I don't like what I'm seeing with the way DEI has been introduced and integrated into the curriculum in the other towns. For example, after implementing DEI, nearby school districts have cut AP classes, midterm and finals canceled, mind you, at the surprise of not only parents and students, but teachers as well. Gifted programs taken away and differentiated levels in math gone at a sixth-grade level, all in the furtherance of their DEI curriculum. If time is being spent to re-educate our teachers and money spent to implement DEI, what is being cut from the budget and in the classroom for it? When my children reach high school, will AP classes, different levels of subject matters, and other programs be cut like was done in the communities around us? So all I can do is question. Are we next? This cannot be allowed to happen here. Lowering our standards is not acceptable. I want to know. We all want to know, and we want a continued voice in the education of our children. So I ask the board to allow us, the parents of our children, a chance to collaborate with the administration on your new strategy. We want a seat at the table and a representative collection of the community to have a voice, not a select group of people handpicked by the very individuals that pushed this new program through in the first place. Please consider that these are our children, and while you have a responsibility for their education, we have a much bigger responsibility as their parents. We all moved to Darien for the great school systems, but parents, please wake up. I urge you to demand a voice in this process. We are responsible for what comes next and how our town stays a place where future generations want to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, my name is Nicole Orr. I reside in Half Mile Road. We transitioned our daughter to the Oxford School for fourth grade just before the start of the pandemic. What an absolute blessing for her and our family. Most impressionable was the attention her teachers gave to her as a student, a person, and a child. It's really hard for me to put into words how much I respect, appreciate, support, and revere her teachers. I've heard testimonies at prior Board of Ed meetings from parents and seniors who shared similar sentiments of gratitude. Graduates of the class of 2020, after an amazing education, which took place approximately between 2006 and 2019, shared heartwarming pride for their education and opportunities to articulate into prestige-- shared heartwarming pride for their education and opportunities to articulate into prestigious colleges. I'm also so impressed by their insight into the importance of knowing how to adapt to a changing world, where previously accepted actions, phrases, literature are now thankfully being reevaluated and questioned. As a community, we need to celebrate the progress of this education, but we need to do better. I have been gravely disturbed by hearing about some recent sentiments shared by some students in this community. Fortunately, the people I have met personally in Darien share one unifying sentiment, that racism, sexism, judgment, just plain mean behavior should be condemned and not tolerated, not responded to by letters of the community, not responded to with op-eds, but with education and strict discipline. I am sharing that I, wholeheartedly as a parent, support our teachers. I wholeheartedly stand against any form of intolerance. And at the same time, I wholeheartedly stand for curriculum transparency. I reiterate, I stand for all of these things. They are not mutually exclusive. The curriculum is changing. We have no longitudinal data to conclude if the current implementations are beneficial or detriment. It's too new. Changes are dynamic, evolving, unvetted. We don't know if it's good. We don't know if it's bad. We don't know if it's going to be just as beneficial as those parents who shared how proud they were of the education from 2007 to 2019. We only know that it's new. I've heard the sentiments leave it to the experts. I know what I have expertise in. It's not childhood education. And it's precisely because I do not have expertise in this novel unvetted curriculum that I want to know details, not just in the form of an online publication with details buried in page 210 of 380, released during the summer months when we're on vacation during a pandemic, but detail shared at every meeting with every parent, with multiple people informed. To the prior mothers who have suggested from after their graduates that they support the school and teachers perhaps more than I do.
Nicole, you're at time. Thank you.
Lori Olson, 16 Little Brook Road. Before I start, I want to start with something my family went through in 2012 when we moved here from Seattle. I had a fourth grader, a fifth grader, and a first grader. And had a bully. I went to the teacher. I went to the principal. I went to everybody I thought I could go to. And it went on and on and on and on. And I'm saying this today because things have to change here. Because I have emails from 2013 begging for change, begging for someone to help my son, because he would get in my car and he would cry all the way home. And it wasn't until my fifth grader, his brother decided to step in that things changed. And I was told over and over that things would. And I have all of my emails. I have an email from Chris Bogart saying, "I wanted to let you know that I sent a letter to Dr. Falcone with some suggestions." I have an email here saying to me, to the principal, saying, "Please, please, for fifth grade, do not put my son with that other child." I have, I mean, I have all of them. And I put, I printed all of these out because I want you to see that this is not a political thing. These are from nine years ago. I blacked out things. And then I have an email that I found searching for these from 2015, where my older son was on a basketball team in town. And he played, he was 12 years old at the time, and the 12-year-olds all hit hands afterward. And the other team called my 12-year-old a faggot. Uncalled for. And I emailed Joe Marzano, and that's my email to him, saying, "This cannot happen here." I'm appalled. I'm offended. So I want to talk about the continuing acts of hate and discrimination that keep happening at our schools. Almost every week, we hear about another hurtful incident, graffiti in the bathroom, posting on social media, slurs on our athletic fields. And just today, we learned of yet another swastika found in the middle school. I'm not here to place blame, but I believe we need to acknowledge that Darien is caught up in the national trend of rising acts of hate. Just this morning, I read a news story about acts of vandalism at houses of faith of all kinds, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, being in the rise everywhere. 2020 was the highest year on record, and 2021 is off to an even higher rate. And we've seen higher amounts of this activity in our town. I am here to plead with the board and the administration to engage in some real practical problem solving. This isn't about pointing fingers or a political agenda in a particularly heated campaign season. This isn't about pretending we don't have a serious problem or pretending that the current strategies and consequences are working. This is about making real change. Of course, there isn't one tangible solution. But there, but the one thing that could have struck this much needed change would be the removal or watering down of the school's diversity initiatives and programs that address intolerant of all kind. I just came back from Parents Weekend at my eldest son's college, because the people I refer to there are freshmen and sophomores in college. It's been nine years. And my son goes to a large Big Ten university in a conservative state, and the emphasis placed on the school's diversity program is extensive.
You're at time, Mrs. Olson. Thank you.
I'd like to finish for Lori Olson. I'm Tiffany O'Connor at 48 Le Warden Road. She was explaining that she just came back from her Parents Weekend at her eldest son's college. It's a large Big Ten university in a conservative state. And the emphasis placed on the school's diversity programs is extensive. Additional course requirements to graduate, sexual harassment training for all fraternities or loss of their charter, signage and announcements at football games. Significant initiatives are happening at other schools. Big corporations are instituting similar programs requiring employee training as well. All of our children will be receiving this type of training. It's just a matter when. The bottom line is that this growing intolerance is an enormous problem. And the Darien Public Schools need to take action. Ignoring or underestimating it will only make it worse. And the last thing we want is to be a town with a reputation for tolerating hateful behavior. That reputation will drive businesses away and dissuade new residents from moving here. But most importantly, many of our students will leave Darien complacent, dejected, or hopeless, and they may never want to come back. Proactive steps need to be taken now before the situation becomes completely out of control.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Public comment? Michelle, do you want to move to Zoom? Is there people outside? Okay, thank you, Jen. Thanks, Michelle.
Of course. Barry Palmer, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Barry Palmer. I live 17 Putnam Lane, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm the president of the Darien Education Association, and I do speak on behalf of the teachers of this community. While there are many stakeholders in Darien Public Schools, the most important ones are the students. I was disappointed this week to see that the same website that was created to publicly humiliate teachers and then accused us of being bullies when we asked them to stop has now shifted its focus to criticizing the district's strategic plan and vision of the graduate. More specifically, their criticism centered on DEI. No surprise, the same criticisms were given tonight at public comment. Based on the outpouring of support for teachers from parents over the last two weeks, we do not believe this website is representative of the vast majority of parents in Darien. And for the record, the teacher lessons and activities humiliated for public shame this year have been used for years in the school community, helping us to earn the number one ranking we have. A purposely misleading attempt to conflate diversity, equity, and inclusion with critical race theory and Marxism by this anonymous group is unacceptable. This effort not only shows a severe lack of kindness and empathy for those brave students who have shared their stories, but is also dangerous to the well-being of all our students. We owe it to our students to create a safe and supportive learning environment, regardless of their learning differences, race, gender identity, religion, or sexuality. I refuse to believe that this ideal is simply an educational trend, as said by a member of the board this week. And I would ask those same critics that if the community does not value this ideal, what exactly do we value? Diversity, equity, and inclusion are not political. To try to politicize DEI is damaging to our students and intentionally diminishes the quality of education this district provides. The DEA supports the strategic plan and the vision of the graduate, and thanks all of those parents who put the needs of our students first. I would like to end tonight by thanking the countless parents who have reached out to teachers in the last few weeks. Your words and actions are making a difference. And I would also like to thank Katie Stein and Deb Ritchie for their advocacy to our students. We can only hope future board members follow your lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Jeff Thompson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Jeff, it looks like you're not muted. You're on, you're muted still.
There we go. Great. Sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jeff Thompson on Goodwise River Road. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent. Darien parents love and appreciate the Darien Public Schools and our wonderful educators, and we wholeheartedly support teachers educating our children. Darien Public School System has the best academic, has one of the best academic reputations in the country, and is why we and many other families have moved here. Of great concern is the school administration's and teachers' agendas seem to be changing in profound ways from what we as parents know, understand, or choose. As parents, we have a duty, obligation, and frankly, the right to review any potential radical changes that could affect our school's curriculum. As parents are the primary stakeholders in our children's education. Tonight, we are here to ask, I'm here to ask the administration, Board of Education, to pause on implementing the Darien Public Schools' new strategic plan. This new plan hasn't been fully vetted, hasn't been socialized to parents, and critical details remain unknown. It is anchored in a diversity, equity, and inclusion approach, which in spirit has great merit. Yet there are many unknowns regarding its implementation and its potentially negative impacts in our school systems. Let's pause so everyone understands the impacts and the intent of new and untested curriculum that's being added throughout our school system, which begs the question, what programs or academics may potentially be eliminated to accommodate the new strategic plan? I bring this up tonight, as have other parents, as there are concerning trends occurring in the neighboring public school systems of Greenwich, Rye, Stanford, and New York City that are eliminating or diluting gifted programs, AP courses, midterm and final exams, all in the name of DEI curriculum. I hope this is not an omen for Darien. I hope we remain focused on academic excellence and not replace academic merit with political agendas. Let's pause and learn how the curriculum play that proposed this plan was selected and to more broadly evaluate whether this plan truly incorporates all voices of the Darien community and not just a selected few. Let's pause and craft a commitment where we can transparently and through civil and collaborative discourse, discuss the merits and intents of any new strategic plans and its curriculum without sacrificing academic rigor or reflecting talks of political agendas. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Chrissy McCarthy, you are unmuted and recognized.
Chrissy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you, so please continue. Thank you.
Wonderful. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. I am another concerned parent and agree with the statements made here tonight on transparency from the school administration and the Board of Education and the inclusion of parents in the curriculum committee and in general, in the education of our children. Please pause and allow us to collaborate with administration and our outstanding teachers on the new strategy before it is implemented. We want to know the specifics of this strategic plan. We do not want to be excluded. Regardless of political party, this is something all parents want, and it is within our legal rights. Thank you and be well.
Thank you for your comments.
May I have her address, please?
Excuse me?
Her address, please.
Oh, Chrissy, do you have your address there? You could provide us.
25 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
Suzie, you are unmuted and recognized.
I know. Well, this is, this all went on during COVID too, when parents had to get up.
Hi, there's someone that has their mic open, and we're waiting to hear from Suzie. Suzie, why don't you go over?
Ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, Suzie Flaherty, Lake Drive, Darien. Does anybody have bingo yet? Because I've got full speed ahead, complacent, pause, sweeping change. The fear that is being portrayed by the people who, I'm getting whiplash, because last week or two weeks ago, it was hating on the teachers and hating on the curriculum and wanting to change the curriculum. And now the schools are great and the curriculum is great and the teachers are great. And now we're attacking the administration and the board. I'm just a little, whoa, my neck. I'm just really, I've grown up in this town. I've been here for 51 years. And I have been defending this town for 51 years by people who call us racist and call us classist and call us bigots and call us snobby. And all I'm seeing lately is that these people that I've been arguing with are kind of right, and I'm worried. And this information has been out there. And because you were complacent, read the information. And hopefully, you will be involved. And I hope that you'll go through the proper channels to be involved. But in the meantime, I've read the, I've read the strategic plan and I've read the vision of the graduate. And this is about creating human beings in addition to creating academic successes. And that's what colleges are looking for these days. I just got back from a weekend of looking at colleges with my son, and everybody is talking about diversity and student and citizens of the world and being able to converse with someone and understand and want to learn more. And that's all that these plans are trying to do is create kids who understand that there's more out there than just being an academic success. We are really good at that. And I'm sure that I trust, I trust the committee and I trust the teachers to implement certain aspects of the strategic plan and the vision of the graduate to create even better and more worldly kids who will succeed in life beyond Darien. Right now, the kids in Darien are leaving this town thinking that they are powerless to create change in their school. And I don't blame the administration for that. I understand that there's a process and I understand that things have to happen in a certain order. But the reality of it is, is that kids are giving up on being able to affect change in their community. And that's terrible. For our kids to be leaving Darien High School thinking that no matter what you do, the same stuff is going to happen over and over and over again. So I'm not saying that we.
You are at time. You're at time.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Paul Michalski, you are recognized and unmuted.
Paul, can you hear us?
Yep, I had to hit those buttons. Got you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Michalski, and I live at 371 Middlesex Road. And I'm one of the neighbors' party to the lights agreement included in your agenda for discussion tonight. As you consider how you would like to move forward with the high school neighbors, I would ask you to keep in mind two things, the history and the teaching opportunity. The history of lights at the high school is a storied one. The first effort to get lights approved was denied by P&amp;Z in 1994. The lights debate resurfaced in 2006 with a new proposal to the board by third parties. The effort to get lights approved resulted in a two-year battle that consumed huge amounts of board time, destroyed relations between the board and the high school neighbors, and ultimately resulted in a disapproval by P&amp;Z in 2008. The next eight years were characterized by tension and distrust. Neighbors felt they had to be on guard constantly for lights proposals. Limited temporary lights were approved without neighbor opposition, but just four years later, light creep began. With 10 years of animosity, tension, and distrust, characterizing characterizing the relationship between neighbors and the board. In April 2016, a group of neighbors publicly proposed a compromise for permanent Lights. Rather than continue the Lights-No-Lights battle, we wanted to suggest a third way forward that could restore the relationship between the high school and its neighbors, permanent Lights for the high school athletes on a reasonable basis that respected neighbors in the residential neighborhood. A compromise was worked out with then-supervisioned Breder and approved by the board. A permanent Lights application went through P&amp;Z without neighbor objection. Because the fear of Lights creep remained a reality, a compromise included a five-year standstill. This gave neighbors a period of peace, not having to worry about new proposals for expanded light usage. It also gave the board and administration a period of peace, not having to spend time addressing new proposals from youth sports leagues. The peace plan has been working. I hope the board will honor the third-way compromise and extend the standstill to give everyone at least an additional five years of peace, good relations, and trust. The second thing I'd like to ask the board to consider is the teaching opportunity provided by this situation. I believe that in life, we can take either a can we or a should we approach the decisions? Can we ask, can we get away with it? Can we get more? Can we win? And this is all too common approach in our hard-driving, high-achieving Fairfield County. I remember one school official lamenting publicly that the golden rule around here is whoever has the most gold makes the rules. I asked her to consider a should we approach? Should we ask, is this the right thing to do? Is it consistent with the real golden rule? Should we require, this requires much more courage and moral fortitude. I believe extending the standstill is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do because it allows neighbors to go on with their lives, not constantly worrying about Lights creep. It's the right thing to do because it frees the board from spending time considering proposals and then fighting for them. It frees you to spend your time on the most important priority, the education of our children. It's the right thing to do because in a small town like Darien, and it matters between neighbors, should we is the right approach. And it's also the right thing to do because the current compromise is working for neighbors and seems to be working for high school athletics. It represents a real compromise that was worked out in good faith to end 10 years of poor neighbor relations. I believe the teaching opportunity comes from the example you will set for our youth by the approach you choose. I hope you will choose the real golden rule.
You're at time. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Jackie, you are unmuted and recognized?
Good evening. This is, good evening. This is Bill Lenich from Jackie's phone. I live in Syonoy Road. I stand with many of the parents that have already spoken tonight about the need for transparency and accountability. And frankly, if I could repeat everything Natasha said, I would, but she's a lot smarter than I am. So I'm going to go with my talking points. I also feel strongly that David Brown has owed many apologies. Perhaps he was given them at previous meetings or privately. He deserves our sincere apologies and gratitude for serving the role he is. What happened to him and his family is shameful, was reckless act, has serious consequences. That's the kindest way I can describe it. As parents and members of this community, we expect, in fact, we demand better than that. The most sacred trust one can impart is a leap that we as parents make in sending our children to unsupervised environment in school. As parents, we are partners with the faculty in school of this town. That partnership requires accountability. We deserve input on this curriculum. Disagreements are bound to happen, and that's totally acceptable. How we work through any disagreements about the curriculum and the transparency of what is being taught and why it's being taught will define the future of this school system. Entrenched individuals must welcome disagreement and respect those who are asserting it. Work towards a curriculum that reflects the principles we need to instill in our children. You do this by being specific about what you mean by transformative, what you mean by equity, what you mean by inclusivity. I haven't heard any specifics yet. Any curriculum devoid of parents' input is not teaching. It's aggressively counter to the functioning school and community. I hope that the school board recognizes this gap and rectifies it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Alicia Skinner, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hi, Alicia Skinner from Cliff Avenue. Over the last few meetings, I've heard a lot of concerned parents speak up and request a curriculum committee from this board. Parents are asking for transparency because they're seeing significant changes occurring to the curriculum in our town and the towns around us. In a recent article in The Advocate, I read that Stanford High School decided to cancel certain AP classes and that parents were not even informed. As parents, we do not want a surprise like that in our community. And so I'm asking that before a new strategy is implemented by this board, that parents are allowed to review and comment on that strategy before, not after. Most of us moved here because of how highly rated our public school system is, because Darien High School students are amongst the best and brightest and go on to our nation's top universities. And that is why we care about the changes you're trying to implement, because it directly impacts our kids and directly impacts the reasons why we moved to Darien. We want to be included. We do not want to be surprised.
Someone has their mic on.
Excuse me. We want to be included. We do not want to be surprised like the parents were in Stanford. So please be transparent with us on these non-trivial issues. If there is a desire to take away AP classes in Darien, we should be involved in that decision. If there is a desire to take away the gifted and talented programs, we should be involved in that decision too. If there is a desire to teach divisive ideologies that confuse children or may not be age-appropriate, we deserve to know in advance. We want to know. We want to have a say before it is implemented and not after. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Julia Geeson, you are unmuted and recognized?
Julia, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you. Thank you. Sorry about that audio problem. First of all, I do want to say thank you to the board for allowing all of us as a community to get together and hear everybody's comments. Before I go to my prepared speech, I just wanted to say that there is a truth to everyone that had spoke tonight. And my goal, right, is for us to come together as a community so we understand each other's ability to parent and come to a common understanding. I'm at One Wamsley. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Henley School, and I'm very interested in understanding what is being taught within our Darien schools. I ask that you kindly reflect on how the board's vision of the graduate's strategy was rolled out by the school board to our wider parent population. It is imperative that we work on a collective strategy before it is officially implemented. As parents, we have the right to know the extent of all changes made within the Darien schools. I never received any information from the board that these proposed changes were put into motion. In the spirit of diversity, I would have hoped that the board had included all parents so that diversity of thought was also brought to the table. I want to include in this, I want to be included in this journey, and I want all parents to be included as well, regardless of political affiliation. We're better than that. This is something that all parents need to be included in. Please be transparent and include parents. This is all that we ask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Amy Zerb, you are unmuted and recognized?
Can you hear us, Amy?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Amy Zerby, and I live at Nine Morehouse Drive. My pronouns are she, her, hers. Over the past few months, there has been a rising backlash against the district's strategic plan and vision of the graduate, which is surprising because we've been discussing them for almost two years. From what I can gather, the strategic plan and vision of the graduate have been discussed during at least nine Board of Ed meetings since November 12, 2019. On that date, the Board of Ed unanimously approved the controversial Connecticut Center for School Change to develop the strategic plan. At that time, not one Board of Ed member nor any member of the public took issue with the Connecticut Center for School Change. Throughout almost two years of multiple discussions, presentations, and communications to parents, there was not a murmur of dissatisfaction. Now, just in time for our local election, people all of a sudden oppose this plan, and a sitting board member is withdrawing his support, even suggesting we scrap the strategic plan despite the Board of Ed's involvement over the past 23 months. I could talk at length about the merits of the strategic plan, but it wouldn't do any good because most of the people who oppose the plan are either conclusive in spreading misinformation or are being led astray through a propagandistic website, which is undermining our schools. Websites like this have popped up all over the country to scare people into believing that CRT is being taught in the schools and to spread lies about DEI. This board unanimously approved the strategic plan a few months ago. And to criticize the plan now would be an indication of incompetence, and people would lose confidence in you. It is your job to have conversations with parents explaining why you support the strategic plan and the vision of the graduate. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Carolyn Magui, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hi, good evening. My name is Carolyn Magui, and I am in 28 Kansett Lane. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Ritchie and Mrs. Stein for their service in the Board of Ed. They have been invaluable members to our Board of Education and truly supporting all our children without any hidden agenda. So I thank you for that, and I'm sorry to see you leave the way some of you are leaving. Amy Zerby just kind of say what I wanted to say, but I just wanted to make sure that the people that think that there has been no transparency regarding the strategic planning process or the vision of the graduate, I would like to mention the following dates so you can go into the website and find the meetings. December 16, 2019 is where the discussion of the strategic planning process started. January 13, 2020 was the first meeting with the Strategic Planning Committee. January 28, 2020 was the Strategic Planning Committee meeting. February 2, 2020, Strategic Planning Committee meeting. February 25, 2020, the Strategic Planning update to the Board of Ed. All these meetings happened before COVID. I've been to each meeting of the Board of Ed in person as an RTM education committee person, and they're all there for you to see. So if you want more information, it's all out there for you to find it. I just gave you all the dates so you can go see it. I thank you all for the incredible work you're doing. I am in total support of the DEI initiative and the vision of the graduate, and I do hope we move forward and implement what we need to implement to make our schools much better for every kid in school. We are fantastic academically. We are failing our kids in terms of being real humans, being people with heart, with acceptance, and with an open mind to face the world that we are living in. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Nicole Lyons, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hey, guys. I'm Nicole Lyons, 63 Reillyan Road. I just wanted to finish up for one of the statements. One of our earlier parents was saying Nicole Orr. It was really important for her to express that, and I think it's, actually, I would echo the importance of this. We are not opposed to diversity, equity, inclusion. We are not trying to interrupt anything. We are simply asking to be involved. We're simply asking that our younger children, who have not quite gotten through the system that many of these other parents' children have gotten through to date, be allowed the opportunity to experience and benefit from the same academic excellence that we had before. And I think it doesn't really matter that decisions have been made. It is certainly still our right to become involved moving forward. And I just want to clarify that we want to collaborate. We want to be partners. We want to be involved moving forward in how this rolls out, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Teresa Vo, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hi.
You can hear me.
Teresa Vo, 22 Circle Road. I actually was not planning to speak tonight, but I just have to say, as a co-chair of one of the PTOs, CDSP representative for one of the schools, member of the RTM Education Committee, I have been coming to Board of Ed meetings religiously every other week for about six years. There is no other board in this town more transparent than the Board of Education. Let me repeat that. There is no other board more transparent than the Board of Education between their subcommittee meetings, between the every-other-week meetings. The information is out there. It is on the website. You can see everything. That can't be said for every other board in this town. So for parents who think that this has all been done in the cover of darkness during a pandemic, you just haven't been going to the meetings that have been happening. They are out there. Read your newsletters. They go out every week that are telling you about what is going on in the schools. Follow your PTOs online on social media. They will tell you what is going on. And for those of you who are worried about colleges, I have a sophomore in college. She is at what is considered a top 10 liberal arts college in the country. I don't think that's important, but some people do. And let me tell you, she's had to defend who she is as a person because when people hear she's from Darien, Connecticut, they assume the worst of her. We need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Louise Waylett, you are unmuted and recognized?
Louise, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You're going to have to speak up a little louder, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can you hear me now?
We cannot.
My volume is up.
It's a little better. Keep trying.
All right.
That's good.
I'll try to shout.
Thank you. Go ahead.
There are three parts to my comments. Firstly, I'm very concerned for the students at Darien High School who are feeling marginalized right now, our Black Student Union, and our LGBTQ students. So I would like to ask the board to be very clear in its messaging around this. Adults, if you are not a teacher or an administrator, you do not have the right to challenge these teens for their thoughts, feelings, and beliefs. It's their First Amendment right to disagree with your beliefs. I have heard that there are adults seeking to silence them out of a fear. Of what exactly? Our teachers and admin must be struggling to keep up to best support all DHS students because so much of their day is spent dealing with non-curriculum issues and parents who refuse to make their kids accountable for their behavior. We must create a safe space for students to speak their thoughts, and I'd like the board to have a discussion specifically on this topic. My second comment, and do please hear me out. My second comment is for Mr. Brown. It is not political. It's humanitarian. Mr. Brown, I sincerely want you to listen to my words. Many of us live in Darien with white privilege. How we choose to carry that white privilege directly impacts our home life, how we raise our children, life on our street, in our schools, and our wider town community. Mr. Brown, I believe your unwillingness to clarify where you stand on white power symbols or even the lack of them demonstrates a lack of humility. And honestly, white privilege without humility is something so awful, it is hard for me to describe. So I am begging you to clarify where you stand because it's impacting the board you are working on. It's impacting our community and the whole student population you are supposedly representing. To all those who defend a lack of humility, and I'm almost done. To all those who defend a lack of humility, I resort to simply asking you to consider this. Top college admissions departments around the country observe very closely the top school districts like ours, full of smart white privilege, and they carefully select students to complement their existing student population. On a scale of one to 10, how attractive do you think colleges find students from a community where a lack of racial humility is tolerated? To those parents who think we've been denied, they have been denied a seat at a decision-making table around DEI and the vision of the graduate, I suggest to you, the opportunity was there for the taking. It's called stepping up to attend every board meeting. It's called serve on parent committees and volunteer your time in schools. I am very grateful to those who've put in hundreds of unpaid hours. Thanks to Deb Ritchie.
You're at your time, Louise. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Deb Ritchie and Katie Stein for their time on the board, for their steady leadership, and for voting on the issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I need her address, please, Duke.
Excuse me?
Her address.
Could you just give your address again, please? You're on mute, I think.
Sorry, G102 Colony Road.
Thank you.
Debbie McGarren, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hi, good evening. My name is Debbie McGarren of 60 Holly Lane. I'm calling in as a concerned parent and I wanted to follow up on a statement from a prior speaker that was cut off while addressing the thoughtless attack launched against one of our current contributing Board of Education members. All the board members who serve on this board are our neighbors, parents, public service servants in this town. And any sort of disputes that may arise should always be resolved by talking to one another and not taking them online. Right and wrong do still exist and we are constantly trying to instill this into our children. As we've seen in the past weeks, there's been problems not only with adults and children with online bullying, et cetera. So we need to be the role models in the room. We need to support one another in our community and we need to do better. Kindness does matter and let's all be better.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Greg Grambling, you are unmuted and recognized?
Can you hear us, Greg? Greg, can you hear us?
This audio is connecting.
Okay. Can you hear us, Greg? Looks like you're connected, but you're on mute. You're still on mute, if you can hear us. Anything to do on our side, Michelle?
No, I can only ask him to, there we go.
Let's see, Greg, can we hear you? We still can't hear you, Greg. We'll, we'll move on and then we'll come back to you. Thank you.
Scott Widdon, you are unmuted and recognized?
Scott, can you hear us?
Hi, yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please continue.
Sure. So I'm Armel. This is Scott. We're at 12 Fitch. Again, I was not going to say anything, but here we are and I promise you won't see me at every single one of these. I have no desire to be out there like that. But I do feel compelled to say something again because there's so much of this, you know, are we moving too fast? Are you next? Is Darien next? Like, energy? And like, at the end of the day, like, the people of this town are very smart. If you want more information, you can probably find it. You can dig it up or ask Ms. Magui. She clearly is, you know, dialed in on this stuff. You can find the information if you want more clarity. And people are just, I mean, nothing that anybody says here tonight is gonna really, in my opinion, impact how people vote. It's, it's 2021. People are gonna vote the way they vote. So I'm not here to talk about that. I want to talk about the kids and the messages that our kids are getting from the administrators and the town leaders. You can't control other people, right? This is something I've learned in my life. People are gonna say awful things to you. There are gonna be incidents of hate. It's America. It's going to happen. What you can't control is your response. And I think that the response, something is really broken in this town because people seem very reluctant to say anything other than we condemn. And I guess what I want to say is that it's, it's really not enough to say you condemn it. You need to actually condemn it. I, I, I cannot for the life of me understand why there hasn't been like us, an assembly or a series of assemblies. Get the kids together. Have the administrators, have the teachers, have the leaders stand up and say, we condemn this behavior. We will not tolerate this swastika. We will not tolerate this racist bullying. I don't understand what is so broken that we can't even seem to do that. I think we all agree that some behavior is worthy of condemnation. So I, I'm calling on you guys, our leaders, get together. If you could, if we can get everybody together to watch a football game, we can get everybody together to listen to the leader saying to them, we won't tolerate this here. That's, that's my message. I just, I really hope that we can be stronger on communicating to the kids themselves. This is not who we are.
Thank you. You're at time. Thank you very much for your comments.
Greg Grambling, you are unmuted and recognized?
Should we try again, Greg?
Let's try this.
We can hear you, Greg. Thank you.
All right, great. So, you know, my first question is, and now Mr. Danine, I can't help but ask why you cut off one member of our community for speaking out for another board member, Mr. Brown, but not cut off another bad-mouthing hand who clearly missed his public statement? That seems inappropriate and not consistent. Regarding the strategic plan materials that are going to be discussed tonight by Dr. Adley and Mr. Tranberg, I would like to hear Dr. Adley and Mr. Tranberg specifically discuss any significant or transformative curriculum changes that they have discussed or which they think may occur as a result of the implementation of the strategic plan, including but not limited to the following. Specific potential changes in literature or textbooks, including books or resources used by students for various academic subjects or in the library. One of these changes already occurred with removal of history books at DHS unbeknownst to parents. Specific potential changes to classes or programs available to students, including, for example, elimination of AP classes or the gifted program. Any potential changes in the teaching of historical events that have occurred in the United States. Any potential changes to testing requirements for students. Any potential segregation of students by race, gender or otherwise, which students in other schools around the country have been subjected to in the name of DEI? Will equity, which I understand is subjected to be equal outcomes for all participants and therefore the elimination of outstanding performance, be incorporated into sports, theater, arts, music and other non-academic areas as well? Any potential new materials or surveys that could be deemed as political in nature? In addition, I would like to understand what percentage of students, teachers and faculty time will be taken away from academics for purposes of implementing curriculum changes related to the strategic plan? How will potential changes be specifically communicated to parents in advance of implementation? Dr. Adley, appreciate your response. My email request regarding these items in which you indicated any significant or curriculum changes would be discussed at the Board Curriculum Committee. I would like you and Mr. Tranberg to confirm you agree the listed items are significant and that the Board and Curriculum Committee wouldn't just discuss these, but seek board approval in advance of implementing them. Given the board's critical role in approving the curriculum and therefore any significant changes to the curriculum, which I think all parents would agree, the list I just walked through all classified as significant, I would also like to hear the board's view of each proposed curriculum change and understand how parents in our community will be involved in overseeing and approving any potential changes. I agree with other comments made this evening from other parents and as stated in Darien's own public school policies and recommended in the recent Cade literature sent by Dr. Adley himself, that parents should be involved in the curriculum leadership team, which is not to be confused with the recently formed Board of Ed Curriculum Oversight Committee. Until these important answers are.
You are at time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to say in response to Mr. Grambling.
All right, Michelle, anyone else?
Hi, sorry, yes.
Louise, can you unmute her?
No, sorry, Louise. We, we've got to move on and make sure we get all public comment and it's not a forum to discuss other people's comments.
I'd like to respond. I read the statement and nowhere in this.
Thank you.
There are no more raised hands at this time?
There's one person in the back.
I have two and a half minutes left. Tiffany O'Connor, I wasn't planning to speak tonight either. But listening to all that I've heard tonight, I guess first I'd like to address the talk about what's happening in neighboring towns and changes such as the elimination of APs. I haven't heard anything about this. I've attended Board of Ed meetings for years. I was the co-chair, one of the co-chairs of the DHSP last year, DHSPA, sorry. And I've never heard a word about this. If this, if this is happening, would you please address it? But I don't think it is and I don't believe those dire warnings that these sweeping changes are happening, like quote, under the cover of darkness. But just to clarify, would the administration please clarify at some point whether any of these changes are actually happening? That would be great. And if they're not, please clarify that. Also, I was on the vision of the graduate. I know that that's going to be talked about more tonight, so I won't go into too many details, but I will say I can't believe that anybody would have an issue with this. I'm gonna pull up. This was a collaboration that started in March of 2020. I guess I'm especially offended on behalf of the students because there was a lot of student input and they had great insights. I worked with, I was in with Dennis Maroney on, in different breakout rooms and different discussions. This was a really thoughtful process and we had focus groups. There were so many opportunities for people to give input, but I, I just especially want people to realize that I thought the most important input came from the students. And I don't see how curiosity, creativity, independence, empathy, integrity. That's the other one I'm missing. Anyway, there's six of them. I don't see how that could be harmful in any way. I want to say what these are. Communication, creativity, curiosity, empathy, independence and integrity. I will say that integrity and empathy happen to be my favorites. I really like discussing those a lot. And right now with all that's happening in our town, I think this vision is just desperately needed now more than ever. And lastly, just wanted to echo my good friend Lori, you know, and thank her for sharing experiences from years back and to point out how, how things just really haven't changed enough. And so many of us, parents, students are asking for help. I also pleaded with the administration for real change.
Thank you very much. You're at time now. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
You're at time now. Thank you, though.
Okay. I'd love to see real change for the students.
Michelle?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you, everyone in the room and thank you, everyone on Zoom. There's also public comment toward the end of the meeting. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley?
Good evening, everyone. Those people who are zooming in and those who are present with us. For my note, as many of you have noted tonight, regrettably, we did have another incident yesterday of the swastika being drawn on a middle school's boys bathroom stall. We do recognize that this pattern of behavior has occurred too many times and that is negatively affecting the schools, community and the students' educational experiences. I also recognize and very much respect those who believe our responses to these incidents are not enough, are not addressed expeditiously. Nowhere acting with deliberate intention on interventions and actions that will make a long-term difference. Growing up, going to school and teaching in Northern Ireland, I acutely am aware of the challenges associated with hate, prejudice and religious discrimination. But I also know there are many more marginalized groups here. And it is critical. We hear from everyone and listen to everyone. I am confident our community has the will to stay the course together and address the issues through education, contrition, personal responsibility and yes, discipline. But also thereafter and only thereafter, I believe we must also learn to forgive our children. Working together and empowering our students' voices, we can better understand, deter and try to eradicate these behaviors. We must, for the benefit of our children, our schools and our community. Our young people are leaving us to be participants and from Darien, leaders in a diverse world. Doing this type of diversity work is undeniably difficult and requires a collective town-wide community effort involving the adults as well as the children. We are pleased this evening to share elements of an intervention plan for the middle school and high school that helps us continue to address the issues and provides a sustainable model moving forward. I do want to recognize, there's no easy transition from that, so you'll forgive me, but I do want to recognize everybody who put together the Home Common events that occurred last two weekend, two weekends ago. There was a tremendous community spirit in Darien around those activities. It was nice. It was nice to see everybody participate. Thank you especially to our parents and volunteers who make these special events happen. I do want to congratulate one of our kindergarten teachers, Fiona Heath. I don't know if we have a wee Fiona picture, Fiona? But Fiona got married this past weekend and I'm sure that was because she had a lot of her kindergarten class with her. And it was, it was nice to see the kid there supporting her and made it a very special time. And that, that picture says a lot of what's good about, about the town. Thanks also to our parents and volunteers who are putting together the book furs. A lot of those are up and running. The rest of them will be completed soon at the elementary schools. It's also nice to say that our kids will get, all the kids up and down the system will have the opportunity to participate then at some level in Halloween celebration this year. We may have different opinions about that, but it's nice to see them all participate and have the opportunity. Budget season is well underway and next week we start to have meetings with department chairs on their submitted budgets. And we have obviously Election Day on Tuesday. That's a professional development day for staff. Elementary staff will be working with their collaborative teams. And mathematics secondary will be working within their departments and building-based, building-based professional development, which will include Ruler and also Ken Sheldon that we will talk about a wee bit later. From our nights from Professor Turner?
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move to the approval of minutes. It is requested that the board approve the following minutes of the regular meeting held on October 12, 2021. May have a motion. Mrs. Parent, second by Mrs. Ritchie. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Board committee reports. Any board committee reports? No, excuse me?
I think it justified a report.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Adley. And we had a policy committee meeting and that'll be on the agenda this evening also. So thank you, everyone. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Darien Public Schools Status Update. Dr. Adley?
Well, this is getting less and less every week. Primarily because the metrics are getting better and better every week. So just a couple of items I have to share with the board. One is, is the metrics themselves. The second one is just to talk about the clinics for our school days, children five to 11. And then a very quick comment on, on parent conferences in this COVID environment. So we had, generally we have a couple of kids a week and that's really, really the height of the COVID cases per se. We did have a couple this week at the middle school and high, the middle school and elementary school. And that really came from, some of that came from the actual pool test in itself. Those students were not symptomatic and the, I believe it was 10 students who were quarantined also were not symptomatic. I happened to have a, a meeting with the State Department of Education on Sunday and they wanted to know from superintendents, where are you seeing the quarantine being needed? Where is that actually happening? And honestly, districts were all over the place. Some of us on the buses, someone were in the cafeteria, someone were in the classroom, someone were from pool testing. And it's really hard to compare because everybody is doing everything a little bit different. Some districts have got rows and columns and some districts are trying to get back into a normal sort of scenario. The one common theme, as they look, as they look for common themes, the one that was so evident that really wasn't mentioned, that they didn't want to mention really was. that they didn't want to mention really, was that people primarily were not seeing people getting sick from having to quarantine, right? There was no evidence that that was the case or necessarily that was the spread in their schools. So that was the main thing. They were looking for areas where you could perhaps give a wee bit of relief to quarantine the students. Perhaps that could be something like it's three-foot only in the classrooms, or maybe it's that three-foot is extended to all other situations, perhaps. That's just an example type thing, but honestly, I wish they would move a little bit on the quarantine because it just doesn't seem to be impacting quite as much. But with that being said, our rates are reducing. Here you see, as of 10/21, I didn't update it for today. But again, relatively no numbers. And just very quickly, the immunizations, they are set up with the town for November 13th and 20th, and then the second dose for December 4 and 11. So we did send out a survey just to get a read on what we would need. So we thank the town and the health director for coordinating this with us and the school system to help our parent community. Parent conferences, there will be a choice in parent conferences, in-person or remote. That's the basic update on that topic. I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
Dr. Adley, I think we ask it at every meeting, if those students that are, those students and staff that are quarantined, have any of them been symptomatic?
No, I said, no.
Okay. If you said that, sorry. Board questions, comments? Mrs. Parent.
Just curious if you have any data, when you sent those surveys out, do you know how many, what percentage of the five to 11-year-olds said that they would be willing to vaccinate?
I don't have that off the top of my head, to be honest, and I don't think, at least it's not the others.
Any other board yet? Mr. Seeny?
Just two questions. One on the line of the quarantine. This was the second week that Darien fell into that gray zone, which is basically stopped measuring us. We're so low, below five cases per 100,000. Is there any discussion around the change in masking in high schools or anything like that?
So we did make the point that that we are not seeing the students symptomatic, and that's where we need relief, but I honestly don't think that there's a desire by the Department of Public Health to move in that particular topic.
Okay. And then the second question, how many students have signed up for the weekly testing in the elementary schools?
How many students? John, I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't have it off the top of my head to say that. I need to ask Alicia how many.
I think last meeting it was 248.
It was 200 something.
Okay, thank you.
It changes week to week, but it started at over 200. Okay, thank you.
Good. Mr. Maroni.
Going back to the vaccine, do we have any ability to change the vaccine policy, sorry, the quarantine policy? Do we have an ability to change that?
Not really, no. We have guidelines that we have to adhere to.
Any other questions around this from the board? All right, good. Thank you. We'll move. Maria Mauricio is on the phone, and as always, does an incredible job talking us through these great presentations. But I'd like to, with the board's okay, move to any questions or comments around the field trip. Mr. Brown?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the two field trips as presented on the forms F2 and bracket.
Do I have a second on that? Mrs. Stein, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for moving that along. Christina, we love to hear from you, and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
We're very excited by all that you're doing with these trips for our students, so thank you very much. It's much appreciated.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Presentation and discussion and possible action on proposed district field trips. Mrs. Ellen Dunn, Mrs. Colleen Thompson. Again, I will move over to the board if they have any specific questions about the field trips that have been presented in the packets. I will open it up to public question. Mrs. Ritchie.
Just confirming, because I reviewed the packet, there is no, besides the substitutes needed, there is no financial impact to these, with these trips, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other additional questions from the board around these field trips? Everyone is good. Mrs. Dunn and Ms. Thompson, thank you for participating. As always, nice job. A lot of these are standard every year, so thanks for all that you do behind the scenes and organizing. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much for supporting them.
Thank you.
Yes, we are, Deb. May I have a motion to approve the following proposed Darien High School field trips: Model UN Conference, Model Congress, Quiz Bowl National Championships, DESA International Career Development Conference, the National Technology Student Association Conference, and the Darien High School Band Trip. Mrs. Ritchie, second by Mrs. Stein. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Again, thank you for all the hard work behind them. We'll move along to presentation of student distribution, class size reports for the high school and middlesex. Mr. Riveraio and Ms. Felice, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you, Paul?
Doing well. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. Mary's going to be controlling the presentation here for us. Before I get started, I just want to thank, as many other people have already tonight, Katie Stein, Deb Ritchie, for all their leadership and for all the work, and it's been a pleasure these past couple of years working both of them. So thank you to both of you and look forward to seeing you. So the distribution report is similar to what we've had in previous years. Mary, if you don't mind moving to the next slide, please. The first slide is just a summary of the overall mean class size. It's similar to previous years. You know, I want to just acknowledge the fact that last year, under COVID conditions, there were certain steps that we took to help with spreading students out and creating smaller class sizes, such as last year, our science labs did not run. So that's what takes into account some of the fluctuation that we see here. But for the most part, the numbers are very similar, where our average class size this year is 18. Mary, next slide, please. This slide shows the average teacher-student load, which again, in comparison to previous years, is fairly similar. It hasn't seen any real substantial changes. Mary, again. The following slide looks at the percentage of classes and what size they fall in their certain categories. Again, that middle category, that 16 to 20, is the category that is the highest percentage-wise, which we view as a positive. So, you know, we are definitely trying to be consistent with that. Mary, again. The following is some of the, summary of the classes that we have that were under 10 students. These are a variety of classes, whether it's certain classes like AP Music Theory class that we run, because it's the culminating activity for our students that are in that, or for some of our lab classes that we offer for students for support in some of our content areas. So this accounts for the majority of these classes that are listed here. Mary, again. This accounts for the classes that fall into the category of what we consider larger classes. This year for the fall, we have four classes, three in science and one in our social studies department that are at 25 students. We obviously don't look to do that, but sometimes in order to meet the needs of the kids and changing schedules, this is kind of how it plays out. We definitely try to avoid that when possible, and that's something that we'll continue to look at as we go on to the spring. And Mary, last slide. And this is our counselor load for the high school, our school counselors. We're currently 178 as an average, which looking over the other high schools in our DIRG, we're exactly at the average. The average for the DIRG is 178, which is exactly where we are. So obviously, this went up a little bit based on the number of students that we currently have at the high school compared to last year. And speaking to our high school counselors, this is obviously a very good number, very manageable, and something that we find that allows our counselors to still be very productive, effective, and reactive to our students when need be. For the high school, that concludes that portion of it. Mary is going to review the portions for middlesex next, as she goes to her.
Paul, let's pause for a moment and focus on any questions from a high school standpoint.
Absolutely.
Great. So I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. Good information. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Thank, oh yeah, sorry, Mrs. Parent.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera, for the presentation. I'm just looking forward towards next year. Do you see any reason to change anything? Do you wish for anything? Are you happy with the way things are going?
Yeah, I mean, things are going very well. I mean, obviously, when the budget comes around, you know, we'll have some, I anticipate having some proposals for certain things, but as far as our class sizes, listen, we're very appreciative of the support that the board has given to the high school and the community in general. It's because of the support that you've all given us that we're able to have our class sizes as they are, which again, we're very happy with and are thrilled.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. We will move on to middlesex middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to walk us through our presentation of the class distribution for middlesex. This first slide takes into account the average class size. The top part of the chart are our core content area classes. Again, we're seeing a similar trend from last year. The bottom half are our special area elective classes. Again, class sizes still remaining pretty similar to last year. Just want to draw your attention to the number of sections on the left. English is slightly larger as we have two English classes in sixth grade, so that's why the number of sections there is large, larger. The next slide looks at the number of large and small classes. Again, we have two academic classes, less than two students. We have one section of Advanced Math VI and one section of Algebra I in eighth grade that are at nine students. We have two sections of mathematics that are at 25, one section of Accelerated Geometry, and one section of Accelerated Pre-Algebra. We had some movement of students moving up into those courses as we sometimes see at the beginning of the school year where students doing summer work or being able to move up to that level class. In terms of special area classes, we do have two sections of orchestra with less than 10 students, one in grade six and one in grade seven. We typically run one section of orchestra per team. In seventh grade, we have one art class with nine students in grade six, and we have one section of music exploration with less than 10 students when we added an additional section to sixth grade based on student requests and new enrollments. The next slide represents the teacher-average class load. Again, we're seeing a similar trend to last year. The math-average class load is slightly lower based on the number of math teachers we have and teachers who are assigned to teach five classes. And our last slide is representative of our counselors. Again, counselors one and two are our current grade seven counselors. Counselors three and four are our current grade eight counselors, and counselors five and six are our current grade six counselors. And if you are comparing to last year, counselors five and six were our counselors for the eighth graders who are now freshmen at DHS. Again, we're very grateful to the board for having the sixth counselor added to middlesex and so that we are able to have the two counselors at each grade level to support students on the floor in real time when needed.
Mary, how does that counselor-student load look like compared to the DIRG?
It's very similar. I don't have all of that data with me, but if you wanted me to share that out with the board, I could do that.
Yeah, if it's in line with the DIRG, that's good. Thank you. I would just ask, I think going forward, it's kind of nice to see how we compare to the DIRG. It gives us a good view as to how we're doing. We may have to make adjustments.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Board questions or comments on middlesex middle school?
I'll ask my same question as Felice. Do you think, are you comfortable with the way things are going in the future? Do you see anything changing?
We're very comfortable with the class sizes. Again, we have some flexibility with, you know, running sections, whether we need to open up another section. We have some flexibility with teachers being able to teach an additional class and hopeful as the year goes on that we may have some presentations to bring some new opportunities for students at middlesex as well.
Thank you.
Great. Any other further board questions, comments? Thank you both for taking the time this evening and for putting together all these numbers. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mary.
We will move on to a social-emotional learning update. Mrs. Shirley Klein, Mrs. Julie Drohler, and Dr. Scott McCarthy.
Evening to the board members. Thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of Mr. Tranberg, Miss Drohler, and myself, we're here this evening for an update to the Board of Education on social-emotional learning. It's my privilege to introduce Dr. Scott McCarthy, our Program Director for Secondary Special Education, Dr. Karen Waller, Principal of Royal Elementary School, and Ms. Megan Anderson, our Director of School Counselors, this evening to present to your update. Also, just to inform the board, we have three psychologists present as well. One from the elementary level this evening, one from middlesex, and one at the high school. For any questions you might have, it's a follow-up. Thank you.
Whoever's going to start, Dr. McCarthy, just understand the board has had the package and we've read through it. So anything you want to highlight as you go through the deck? And then I think it's important that we open up to board questions and comments, and I know the board has, you know, asked a lot about how we're doing with this, especially around the pandemic. So want to make sure we have the right amount of time for the board questions over and above the great information that you put together. So thank you. Who starts? Megan?
I'll just share my screen now. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, great. All right. Thank you to the Board of Education, the Cabinet, faculty and staff, and the community for allowing us to discuss this important topic tonight. My name is Scott McCarthy. I'm the Secondary Program Director for Special Education here in Darien. I'm also a psychologist and the District Safe School Climate Coordinator, and as such, I know firsthand the importance of this conversation. I thank the board for its commitment through policy, the budget process, and your collaboration with our administration toward ensuring social and emotional learning is valued by all. Our goal, as a representative group of administrators, supporting social and emotional learning across the district, is to update you on a number of topics related to social and emotional learning, including current staffing models, staff perceptions of the increase in the number of school psychologists at the elementary level, provide an overview of school counseling support at the secondary level, professional learning initiatives, our partnership with families in the community, and how our building-based and district-based committees collaborate toward accomplishing these goals. To begin, I'll orient us with a definition from the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, or CASL. CASL defines social-emotional learning as a process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. I think it's important here to highlight the word "process" in the definition and share with you too that this process is one that is active and requires instruction, modeling, opportunities for practice, and opportunities for learning when mistakes are made. The strategic planning and vision of the graduate planning processes yielded a mission and vision for the district and a vision for what a graduate from our schools will have accomplished, both academically and with respect to their character. Our social and emotional learning framework aligns closely with the core values established through these processes and will work to complement those frameworks. I'd like to share with you a graphic that we found informative when thinking about the current challenges we face as educators here in Darien and around our country. Anecdotally, we have noticed disruptions to routines at school and home, separation challenges from adults and small peer groups, stamina exhaustion from sustained work, new challenges, learning to collaborate. navigating social settings being challenging, navigating the physical environment independently being challenging, anxiety with the unknown and grief and loss. It's obvious that our students and our staff are being faced with challenges not faced before and we are committed to supporting them toward that success. Our implementation of social emotional learning support is supported by the staffing supported by the board, including adding additional school psychologists at each elementary school, adding an additional assistant principal of special education and student services at each elementary school, the additional assistant, additional school psychologist at Darien High School through the COVID Relief Grant, continued consultation with CBC for DBT implementation and collaborative and proactive solutions proficiency training with Lives in the Balance, which Dr. Mullin will speak more to in just a moment. Just to reiterate, our current, overall current staffing models, inclusive of updates I just shared at our ELP in elementary level, we have an ELP school psychologist and two school psychologists at each elementary level. At Middlesex Middle School, we have six school counselors, three school psychologists, one social worker and one resource officer. And at Darien High School, we have eight school counselors, a director of guidance, four school psychologists at Darien High School and one school psychologist at Fitch, part-time connections counselor focused on substance use, one school social worker and one school resource, resource officer. And now I'm going to have to turn it over to Dr. Mullin, Principal of Royal, who's going to share with you the impact of the additional school psychologist at each elementary level.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I just want to draw your attention on the next couple of slides. We've done some updated work for you. When we had the addition of the elementary school psychologist two years ago, we presented some information on that impact to students. So all of this is just updated information in the same manner that we presented it two years ago to you. As you can see from this first pie chart, this is exactly what we wanted to accomplish. Our school psychologists are spending the vast majority of their time working directly with students. As you can see, 60% of their time is working with direct hours to students and 10% is in evaluations, which is also work directly with students. This includes counseling designated through a program, an IEP or 504, check-ins with students, DBT skills groups that they're running, different types of counseling groups that students have access to, crisis intervention and whole class SEL lessons. And you can see that the remainder of the time is spent doing teacher and parent consultation and training as well as in meetings. Scott, can you move to the next slide? So this again is an updated chart for you. We asked our elementary teachers, again, their perception of the increased support or availability of a school psychologist now that we have two in each building and over 82% of elementary teachers have seen increased or significantly increased support available from the school psychologist. So again, very positive impact from that additional school psychologist at each elementary school. And our final chart that we have for you today is, again, an updated chart from the information we presented two years ago. Scott, can you go to the next chart for me? This shows the teacher-reported areas of impact. So we asked our elementary teachers to, again, rank the three greatest areas of impact in having that second school psychologist. And teachers found that the most significant impact areas were around proactive supports for students and access to a school psychologist for crisis intervention. We also were pleased to see that they reported increased access for faculty consultation and development of behavioral strategies as well as support for working with families. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Megan Emanuelson, another school counselor, so she can talk a little bit about the school counselor supports available six through 12.
Thank you, Dr. Mullin. So it is always my great pleasure to share the wonderful work that our school counselors are doing, particularly as it relates to supporting students' social emotional wellness. We are incredibly fortunate with district and board support to have 14 committed and talented school counselors, six at Middlesex and eight at the high school. It is a very unique role in that they stay with the student for their time in the building. Counselors usually also keep siblings so that each family establishes a long-term relationship with one professional. Councils are a significant source of support and advocacy for students. This slide shows some of the ways in which school counselors support students. It is far from an exhaustive list of what they do during the day, but it does give a sampling of the important work that they are doing. Councils are often the first contact a student or a family or a teacher will have about a concern. They maintain an open door policy encouraging students and families to stop by, call, email or contact them at any time for any reason. While I know we do not have time to go into each of these bullet points in depth, I do want to highlight the work in flex at Middlesex and in guidance seminar at Darien High School as the counselor involvement at this level is fairly unusual in secondary schools. At Middlesex, the school counselors have created weekly lessons focused on a variety of SEL topics to be shared through all the flex periods. In addition, the counselors are each assigned to and partner with a teacher in a flex group, making them very visible to kids through this common experience. At the high school, all students are scheduled for guidance seminar for one quarter. Not only does this allow us to deliver relevant content to students, but since students are usually scheduled with their own counselor, it has helped students and counselors to develop rapport and relationships in a classroom setting. It has really changed the ways, in amazing ways, that we get to know kids. While I could certainly go on and on about the incredible work the school counselors do each day, I will be respectful of our time this evening and say that the school counselor's role is quite literally anything that will assist a student or a family with their school journey. We are involved in every facet of student success, academic, personal and social, and we truly love our daily work. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Mullin.
Thanks, Megan. I think you perfectly highlighted why being a school counselor was such a fantastic job that I had the privilege of doing for so many years. So in moving forward, I'm going to talk a little bit about the professional learning experiences that our staff have had this year. I'll start with Ruler. We wanted to highlight for you the work that our staff has been doing and will continue to engage in. This past summer, each building sent a team for virtual training in Ruler. These implementation teams are now responsible for rolling this training out to the staff in each building over the course of this year. This process allows staff to learn the ruler model and methods and become comfortable prior to rolling this out with students. We're also continuing our work in DBT along with CBC. And training was completed in September for any new mental health staff and administrators in the district. CBC continues to provide consultation and supervision by level for our psychologists, counselors and social workers engaged in using these strategies. Finally, the Royal staff has begun in-depth work this year with a model called Collaborative Proactive Solutions, or CPS. This model is something I've engaged in professional development and learning in over many past years. And I'm very excited that we're piloting this work at Royal this year. I was able to provide some professional learning and choice sessions to elementary staff last year on different PD days. And now I'm proud to say that 12 Royal staff members have received advanced training in this method. A group of eight Royal staff members, including myself, are working with the lead trainer at Lives in the Balance, the organization for this model. We're working with them weekly to receive proficiency training. To tell you a bit more about this, this basic philosophy of CPS is simply put, kids do well if they can. This model allows us to identify lagging skills kids may have that cause unsolved problems. Often, these unsolved problems result in challenging behavior, but this model encourages implementers to look for the unsolved problem, not at the behavior as an issue. Similar to Ruler and DBT, we're looking upstream. When working with students, it's not the behavior itself that we need to focus on. It is the vulnerability, the lagging skill, the unsolved problem we need to identify. Then through this model, we can engage in collaborative problem solving with kids to solve problems and as a result, decrease challenging behavior. A lot of demands and expectations are placed on kids every day. When the expectations placed on a child outstrips the skills they have to adaptively meet those demands, challenging behavior can occur. By focusing on the behavior, we're only seeing the signal that there's a problem and not solving the problem itself. This model allows us to directly engage in collaborative problem solving with students and increase their skills to solve problems. I'd also like to tell you a little bit more about Ruler. Scott, can you give me the next slide? So similarly, I thought I'd speak a little bit about this. Ruler is an evidence-based program from Dr. Mark Brackett through the Yale Center of Emotional Intelligence. And this program helps staff and students recognize, understand, label, express and regulate emotions as well as create and maintain a positive school climate. One ruler tool that I've included on this slide is the mood meter. This helps us accurately identify and label our emotions by considering the level of energy and degree of pleasantness we're feeling. I usually rank right up there in the yellow zone, high energy, high pleasantness. By accurately labeling our emotions, we can then express and regulate our emotions more effectively. And there are ruler tools for that, too. So how do we put this all together? Well, I thought it might be helpful to show you what it looks like across the spectrum of learning here, pre-K through 12. So as you can see, in pre-K through five, the models that we're using in our classroom to respond to social and emotional learning needs of students are responsive classroom and CPS at Royal. At the six through eight and nine through 12, at our middle school and high school levels, we're involved in advisory-type models, flex at the middle school, connecting each student with an adult and the similar, similarly, guidance seminar and advisory at the high school, which also connects students with adults for their entire high school experience. One of the things that we know about social emotional learning and kids' well-being is that having just one student, one adult that students are connected to can make all the difference in the world. Pre-K through 12, we're engaged in both DBT and Ruler. And Ruler, again, will be rolled out to students in coming years after staff has the chance to do training. Lastly, I wanted to highlight for you how we're partnering with our families in this work. Many of you have probably come to some of our parent presentations or coffees in-person or virtual on social and emotional wellness. CBC has run some parent workshops regarding DBT and our PTOs have been phenomenal in getting guest speakers at various school levels to join us to talk about social and emotional learning and wellness. I personally have run some parent and faculty book clubs using books like Raising Human Beings and Permission to Feel. And Royal parents, if you're out there, you'll be getting some more communication from me about upcoming ones. So look out for those if you'd like to join for some more fun book clubs. We also have our extracurricular participation meetings at DHS and our CDSP has sponsored programs for many parent-school connections in this area. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McCarthy to finish up our presentation.
Great. So as you heard earlier from me and then from Dr. Mullin and Ms. Emanuelson, social emotional learning is an integrative, active process that pervades all of our work as educators. As such, we are establishing a district social emotional learning steering committee to work with the building-based DEI committees, the safe school climate committees, the ruler implementation teams, the curriculum leadership teams and the proficiency teams to collaborate toward the implementation of the initiatives of the board and the administration through professional learning and teaching and learning. We've invited Dr. Williamson, DHS school psychologist, Ms. Rudolph, MMS school psychologist and Dr. Williams, Henley school psychologist to join us to answer some questions about our presentation. And thank you for your time again.
Thank you all for that presentation and all the work that goes on behind it. Much appreciated. So I'll open it to board questions and comments. Mr. Seeny?
I'd like to ask, you know, one of you, the acute challenges that you're seeing resulting from the pandemic and the disruption in our students' lives, that grid you showed about all the grades and the number of years and some not ever seeing a normal school year and how that quarantines illness, mass, remote learning, how that has come into play and what you're noticing over the last, this semester maybe and last semester in terms of, you know, either cases or students that you're having to intervene with.
Sure, yeah. I think, I think anecdotally, we're hearing a lot of stories about the impact of students not having typical years for two years. So Dr. Mullin was sharing with, with me earlier how the impact of second graders not having really been on a carpet getting instruction since before March of their kindergarten year and how that's a significant portion of their educational time, that they have not had those expectations and the structure and learned how to turn and talk with each other and what those expectations are. And they're quite different people now, two years, two years later. And so as we put those expectations back in place, we're finding that typically in second grade, we might not need to redirect that behavior so frequently. And we're finding that our teachers are saying to us, I'm having to teach things I typically don't have to teach with respect to behavioral expectations and social emotional functioning because students haven't, haven't had those expectations in quite a, quite a bit. So we're seeing that same thing play out at the middle school. We've had a number of situations on our buses. Just students haven't been on the bus in two years. Or many students haven't been on the bus in two years. And we're seeing the same thing play at our high school in those unstructured times where students haven't had the opportunity to practice those skills. We're finding that students aren't, are requiring more support to be successful in those situations. I don't know if any of our, our school psychologists at the building level have any, have any other internal pieces to share, but that, that's sort of been the experience from the administrative level.
I'd love to hear from the psychologists, especially maybe at the high school and middle school levels.
Sure. Good evening. This is Kate Williamson. Thank you so much for this opportunity to participate in the board meeting. And speaking to more recently what we're seeing, I think that in general, we saw the transition from the summer to the beginning of the 2021, 2022 school year be very challenging. And that makes sense when we think about it. Transitions are always a period of vulnerability for emotional distress and emotional dysregulation for all people, but especially our adolescents. And in this particular transition, there were so many factors that we have never seen before. And I think that we even, we anticipated this maybe more so last fall. And weirdly, we, it came this fall because school is looking more normal than it has been in, in almost two years. The expectations are very different from the last time students were expected to maintain a full in-person, five-day school day. We have, of course, this balance of rigor and relationships, which we've been talking about a lot throughout the pandemic. And there's still no, of course, perfect playbook for how to navigate that balance on a day-to-day basis. And we also have, you know, the fact that there still is the pandemic ongoing to varying levels of impact for each student and each family. So all of these combined, I think we saw an increase in, in student support needed to support students and families throughout the first quarter. I think that with the consistent full-time, you know, in-person being together safely, that has really helped stabilize student concerns as they've come up. And I do feel that there's a perception in the building, speaking for myself, that students are getting their feet under themselves a little bit as we finish up the first quarter here. And, you know, consistency, predictability, routine, those are all things that do promote strong functioning as well as, you know, caring and supportive adults. And I may be a little biased, but I think that we, we have those in spades up at the high school.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. Alan, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think the board, we knew about the pilot at Royal, the CPS. It sounds really interesting, but can you just speak a little bit about budgetary impact? And then, Garen, assuming it's a pilot, what is the plan going forward if it's successful? What is the rollout for the district? Thank you.
So that has been, that has been incorporated into the budget as part of our budget for this year. And as Garen says, it really, it really is a rhyme that kids will, will do well if they can and you focus on the skills that, that they're lacking in. And so they are, they are piling it and Garen is actually leading that pilot. And we've, we would expect and hope if there's, if there's interest and there's a success in it, which, which, which there is, there's great success in it, that that potentially would go into the other schools and be part of the other schools. So there would be a budgetary consideration if we're going to have to do that. For it to be additional training for people, if that's the case.
Okay. Do you think you'll see it in this year's budget or you would?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, so kind of building on Mr. Seeny's question is, is more of just, you have on the slide, sorry, I need to pull it back up. The anxiety and the unknown. And to me, it's kind of a double entendre. Is that the anxiety of the unknown or is it the anxiety that we don't know? And our kids slipping through the cracks? Or I guess my question is, how comfortable are we that we're reaching all kids who are in, not even in crisis, but just are crying out for help? And are we addressing that? And can you, and to echo something Ms. Parent was asking the principals before, are you, do you have everything you need or can we provide more?
So I'll jump in a little bit, Mr. Maroni. Like I was describing, I have a high school senior in my house. And if you'd asked me two and a half years ago if his graduation or his senior prom would be in question, you know, I would have said, no, like, of course not. And he's asking me those questions now. Like, he's like, do you think I'm going to have a graduation? Do you think I'm going to actually get to have a prom? And, and so I think when, so there is the anxiety of the unknown in some way. I think there's anxiety, but there certainly is. I think our students have questions. They don't know if this is going to continue. Um, but there certainly is. I think our, our students have questions. They don't know if this is going to continue to, to, you know, trend in a positive direction. Or if we're going to, you know, kind of head backwards a little bit. And so, and, and the fear of the loss that they've already experienced, right? That all of these students have, have experienced loss. And so is there more of that coming or are we really going to trend upward? I think we're definitely hearing that. Um, you know, we hear it a lot at the high school level, you know, the, our, our seniors is our, is my first year of college going to look quote, normal? Um, you know, and I think everyone was hoping and expecting that we'd, you know, kind of not be in masks and that things would be back to normal. And that some of their traditions and their rites of passage weren't, wouldn't be at risk. And so I think that's one of the things that we refer to. When we talk about anxiety of the unknown, and I'm sure Garen can speak the, the little ones, I'm sure there's lots of questions that they have for, for both school staff and their parents.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would echo what, what Mr. Manuelson said, and, and for, for the little ones. You know, as you saw on that chart, some of these kiddos have never had a, a normal school experience. And so, you know, a lot of the things that, um, you know, my counterparts and, and Dr. Williams could speak to this as well. Is that we're trying to, to create as much of a, of a normal environment as we can, um, while keeping a laser focused. Uh, Mr. Maroni, exactly on, on what you're saying, on making sure that we're seeing all of the kids for whom that anxiety is externalized. And, and for whom the, that anxiety is internalized as well. And we know that anxiety in kids can manifest in, in many different ways. Um, as it does in adults. And so one of the things that our school psychologists and our administrators are, are talking with our. Classroom teachers, our school staff with about is, um, is what to recognize, is what to look for, is to reach out if they have questions about kids. Sometimes it's nothing and a teacher has a concern and brings it to us. And, and you know, our school psychologists are able to do those check-ins with kids and. And send kids on their way. Um, and sometimes there is more anxiety there. And sometimes there is more of that sense of grief or loss or, or the unknown that we really need to attend to.
Mrs. Akman.
Um, so I first would just like to say a big thank you. I think we've heard a lot about curriculum and will continue to this evening, but the real answer is, is kids don't learn. Kids don't do curriculum unless their base needs are met. And if you're anxious or you're in a heightened emotional state. You're not reading your math textbook or your history textbook or any of it. So I think so much has fallen on our psychologists, our guidance counselors, our support staff. And I just think a, a big thank you, as much as we have added, um, professionals to this, I'm sure your workload has been incredibly high, to say the least. And I'm sure difficult at times. So a big thank you because you're handling a lot of our kids' base needs so they can even. Attempt to look at this curriculum, which is often so hotly debated. Um, just a big thank you for all of your work. And I think people really need to understand how foundational it is. SEL isn't trendy, anxiety isn't trendy. These are things that kids are experiencing. And if you want them to learn, you need to take care of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. This is McCammon.
Thank you for their presentation. And I'm particularly focusing on the family partnerships slide, which we know, um, you know, the home. School connection is really critical for everything, but particularly for, for social emotional, uh, health. Um, can you talk a little bit about whether or not, uh, your relationships with and how you're working with families has, has changed? Are you having to do anything differently in terms of communication back and forth, um, with, with parents in particular, as part of managing, uh, the environment and the students?
Hi, Ms. McCammon. I can, I can start. Um, and I would say, uh, yes, is probably the easy, quick answer. You know, I, I'm the, when you asked that question, I recalled a conversation that I had with a parent, um, in March of 2020, right when we had shut down and, and. You know, the parent was so upset and, and we're just trying to get the kid online. That was what it was really all about. And. You know, we hung up and it wasn't a good phone call. And then I called back a little while later and the parent said, I'm so sorry, we ran out of toilet paper and that's all I'm thinking about. Um, and that conversation to me, it as, it probably sounds silly. I think it's guided. Um, almost every single conversation I've had since then, because the way that we're partnering with families is different. There's different needs that we're attending to. Um, there's different ways that we have to communicate, I think, as, as principals, as, as administrators, as teachers. One of the things that we're trying to do is just be super clear in our communication to make sure that everyone has the information, access to information because. You guys know there's a hundred things coming at us every second and it's just really hard the past. I don't know how long has COVID been going on a hundred years at this point. It's really hard to keep track of everything. So I, I think. Anecdotally, that conversation that I had with that parent in March of 2020 has, has guided. The philosophy that I've, I've tried to have in terms of communicating and partnering with families, which is, um. Sometimes things are really tough and it's sometimes because you ran out of toilet paper.
And on to, um, you know, in the past, uh, our partnerships around our parent coffees at the building levels with CDSP, you know, the, the PTOs at the building level. Have really focused on, on delivering content and information for them. And what we were hearing from our building base committees is, uh, we're overwhelmed and we're stressed. And right now we, we don't really need another presentation or another Zoom meeting, um, to hear more content from you. We need support. And so we've shifted our focus sort of to what Dr. Mullin was saying. You know, what do you need right now? What do you need from us? How can we support you? Uh, you know, to Miss Akman's point too, if, if you're not, if you're not meeting your base level needs and, and, and we can't support you with that. Uh, your children and your families may not be successful. So I think we've seen an increased focus on our social workers, connecting families with agency work. Um, and making sure that communities have those, or families have those, uh, base level needs that they're able to be supported and successful.
And I would say at the secondary level, the, the, I, I, the answer is sort of yes and no, like it hasn't changed in the sense that we've, we've always worked really closely with families. We've all always had very frequent. You know, various modalities of communication with families. Um, you know, our counselors and our support staff, we're, we're in constant communication via email and phone and in-person meetings with families. Um, so, so I feel like that's absolutely, we've always been really, I think, great communicators, and I think that's all still happening. But absolutely agree with Garen that the nature of those conversations has shifted and evolved. And, you know, many of us, you know, are kind of come from a systems. A systems focus that, that families are systems and the system impacts each other. Um, but, but really hearing a lot more about, you know, unique circumstances that are impacting families and therefore children. Um, and really having to, to shift to support, um, not just children, but whole families. Um, and so we're, we're very much prepared for that work. Um, but I think it is, um, we're seeing the nature of the communication and, um, and the needs changing a bit.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent.
Just quickly building on the idea of family, I'm just curious if you have seen. The number of parents initiating conversations about the wellness of their child increasing because of COVID or if it's. Just anecdotally, you seen, I just feel like parents are more aware of wellness and mental health because of COVID. And I'm seeing, wondering if that's translating into be asked more of by parents.
Yeah, I'm watching all of us nod as you're adding that question, Mrs. Parent. Thank you. Yeah, I think, um, the answer is absolutely yes. And, you know. We've all been home with our families for a very long time at this point. So I think there is a, you know, there is that laser focus and we're seeing. Um, we're seeing things that, that we didn't, you know, maybe ordinarily or pre-COVID times. Um, I think certainly. One of the things that that makes me proud of is that we've established trusting relationships with our families. So they do reach out. And I think that's a great indicator. Um, of, of those partnerships. I know that at the elementary schools, um. Having two different school psychologists has been so helpful to be able to have, you know, somebody really focused on different grade levels. Parents know who their go-to person is. Um, and I know that that's the same thing at, at both MMS and at DHS and the Fitch Academy. So I think having parents know what that. Who their go-to person is when, when they're having those moments of, of wonderings and doubts and concerns and questions. Um, it, it takes that stress off, even if those, those concerns are big, because having someone answer the phone on the other end. And say, listen, I, I got you. Let's talk about this, um, has really been helpful for, for many of the families that we've talked to. And I see my colleagues nodding. Um, Megan, I don't know if you want to add anything for the secondary level.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, part of it too, just we talked about the anxiety of the unknown. I think adults and parents are experiencing that too. Um, and so that's, you know, what some of what we hear too, and you know, especially at the secondary level, like. Is the college process different? Do they care about the test score? Like the, there's a lot of, you know, of the anxiety of the unknown, even from the parents who are, you know, concerned for their children and, and what's going to happen and how they can support them. And, and, and there's a lot more like, I think, I feel like our answer is more like, we're not sure yet, like, we're not, we're not really sure how that's going to play out. And so we're just really linking arms with families and, and being in it with them and being in it, you know, within, in their concerns with them and, and on that journey. Um, and, and it's harder because we don't have a lot of the answers that I feel would be reassuring to families. And so there is that again, that unknown factor for, for the adults as well.
Thank you.
I was just going to add to that, Ms. Parent, that I, I think too, uh, families are coming to us and this is sometimes identifying a problem, but the process to identify. The causes of the problem are, are far more complicated right now than they've been in the past. And so, uh, just to make an analogy to academics. Um, when the ninth grade teacher gives the, the pre-test for algebra and a student doesn't do well. We now have to ask the question, what was your team quarantined a number of times last year? Did, were you a remote learner? Did you have trouble accessing instruction as a remote learner? Um, we didn't have to ask those questions before. And similarly, when we're having a student having challenges returning to school, we, we now need to ask that question. Well, what did last year look like for you? Were you home last year? Um, and they're questions that both our families. And our school staff have to explore differently than they did in the past. And so it just creates, um, uh, an increased layer of complication in, in that analysis process.
Thank you all so much.
The only one, sorry, the one comment I would add to that is just, you know, when I walk through Middlesex and I walk through the halls of Darien High School, the kids are just so happy to be there. Like they genuinely are just so happy to be back at school. And I just, every day I just celebrate their resilience and, you know, their joy of learning and their joy of being, you know, in school and. On their sports teams and, and in their clubs. And, um, and so I do, there's, as, as much as we talk about all the hard stuff, I really do want to celebrate, you know, the resiliency of our kids and our staff. Um, who are just really, I think, truly genuinely enjoying just being in person, um, with a more normal school year than we've seen in some time.
Thank you for that, Megan. Any other board questions or comments? Good. Well, thank you all. Um, I can see you all. I'm not going to go through all your names again, but thank you, Shirley and team. Uh, for this update, I think we'd like continued updates on this. It's an important topic. Garen, thanks for all the hard work at Royal. It looks like some really neat results that we should. Make sure we're doing across the district to provide all the help that our, that our students, um, may need. So thank you all very much. We'll move along to an update on the implementation of the district strategic plan.
So, uh, this is, this is the first in the series that the board had requested. Um, I'll just mention that the, we're barely two months, uh, into it. So the way this is framed, the memorandum shares. Essentially each of the, uh, the seven goals. Uh, the strategies are the strategies go along with them and the actions are really the actions that are pulled out for year one. If they're year two or three, we're not, we're not there yet. Um, clearly, uh, any of the goals themselves are. Um, are also fluid and there'll be a living document as, as we go forward. So, um. Hopefully the memorandum is a little bit simpler than, than wading your way through the actual strategic plan itself. So the, the way we have sort of set it up for just for feedback, and I'm certainly happy enough to reconsider how that looks or otherwise, but it just seemed the simplest just to. Uh, list the strategy and the actions that were pertinent to happen in year one or year one to two or that way and sort of prioritize them. Uh, so with that, um, I'd be happy to lead off with, um, perhaps talking about goal one, what the big, the major big things are. I'm not going to read all of this, right? I will pull, we'll pull out a couple of, of things. We'll pause there and then go to the next one. Would that be okay for the board?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, with that, Chris, I'll let you sort of like, uh, just touch on the highlights of each of the actions of page.
Thank you, everyone. And good evening. Uh, just to level set a little bit, diversity, equity and inclusion come up throughout the strategic plan. Um, I had the opportunity to be part of this committee and it was already in progress when I was hired. So I joined the group in. I think April was the first meeting since from the time that I was hired and they welcomed me and I appreciate that. Uh, but something the group was very aware of was the importance and clarity of language. Uh, and what you see in the core values and beliefs specifically is diversity, equity and inclusion. And we were very thoughtful and reflective of, but what does it mean when we say that? Because we know those words can be interpreted in lots of ways. Uh, so equity, this is page eight and nine of the strategic plan if you're looking at that. Um, equity is advocating for and advancing opportunities and outcomes for all. And diversity and inclusion is creating a community that welcomes and embraces the full range of human differences. So when we say DDI, that's what we mean. And I, it's just important that that's clear as we talk through this. And so I'll highlight a few things from goal one. Um, the first is, this is another, uh. It really emphasizes the importance and clarity of language, because there's a goal to talk about, what do we actually mean in Darien when we talk about high quality instruction? Because we love to talk about how great things are, how wonderful the instruction is. And that's true. But when we say that, we actually mean the same thing. Uh, so our professional development and evaluation committee, uh, which we affectionately refer to as PDEC. They are regularly charged with looking at not only the professional development that we offer to support, uh, teaching and learning, but also the teacher evaluation and feedback system. And as you know, there's been a waiver for the past couple of years, so that's been a little bit on hold and we're anticipating that change. Um, so this year when we meet on the ninth, they are also going to be charged with, uh, developing the process for how are we going to develop that common language for high quality instructions? Which I have a feeling we will affectionately refer to as HQI, because we love to have an acronym for it. So, so get ready for HQI. Um, the other piece is, uh, just like students, up to one of our big focuses with students is relearning how to work with each other in groups. Uh, we're doing the same thing with adults. So when we talk about professional learning communities, how are we working together in the same room now that we have the opportunity to do that again? So we're really spending a lot of time talking about what do professional learning communities mean? What do they do? And how can we achieve the best results for students? Um, also under one A, I did want to, um, point out the procedures for the collaborative learning experiences for partner work and small group instruction. Because again, that's not only about adults. This is one of the challenges that we just heard about a bit in the presentation. That, that's a really challenging part. When you look at second grade especially, I mean, you may have seen that, that bracket before. But our current second graders have not had an unaffected actual school experience. And that's really important that we remain conscious of that, uh, throughout for years to come, I would anticipate. Under one D, revise and create the curricula that are designed to responsibly represent diverse perspectives. Uh, so what that means again, diverse perspectives is trying to represent everyone. Uh, so in with the work of the strategic planning committee, what we try to include in that language is make sure we are encompassing the needs of students with learning differences. And also encompassing the needs of students in gifted and talented program. So that was the, the range, uh, that we were talking about. It's all students, no matter what the program is, no matter what the identification is. So for the professional learning focus this year, um, we are continuing our partnership with Dr. Marilyn's friend who. Um, is working with our elementary teachers this year regarding specially designed instruction. And we also have the gifted, uh, program evaluation last year, which was intended to give us all feedback. And that was very well received last year. And it's really looking at how can we provide access to this program for as many students that should be in the program? That's the idea. So it's not about removing a program, it's the potential of expanding it if that's what is best for students. Um, the other piece with, um, one of my favorite quotes, I've been quoted in the paper many times as a, as a school administrator. But I think the Darien Times two weeks ago, uh, quoted me as saying, um, curriculum is not a secret. And so I'll take that one to my tombstone. Curriculum is not a secret. So with our, uh, UBD framework that we have, understanding by design, I think I talked about the three stages of that a bit last time. Um, the importance is, yes, we have a common framework, but it looks a little bit different depending on. The grade level, it might look a little bit different depending on the content area, and that makes things confusing. And so we are definitely working, and you'll see it in the budget proposal of a plan to make sure we can be more clear about the, the curriculum being transparent. Very specifically, how can the stage one of what we're expecting across all grade levels, all content areas be available, uh, with ease? And with ease being the important piece, because as we work to provide information, we can get it, but it takes sometimes more steps than we want it to. But again, it takes time to standardize that practice. Now, under the third area of one C, um, the focus on establishing the best practices for PLCs, this again is related to. Uh, this is really a professional capacity of staff, but the goal one area, uh, that team was very focused on. Part one, priority and language. Two, what are we expecting teachers to teach? And part three, how can we make sure we're supporting them and what we're asking them to do? So that's the clear pattern and the conversation we have for one A, one B, one C. So that focus on PLCs, as I mentioned. Uh, the planned opportunities for diversity, equity and inclusion. And we also have the additional point five literacy specialist that was part of the grant. Um, those positions have been important this year, especially when we look at K two and the importance of early literacy, um, moving forward. So I'll press pause after goal one.
Board questions or comments around goal one? What questions or comments around goal one? Yes, Mrs. Akin.
So we heard a lot tonight about concerns about the idea that we might be stopping A Ps or getting rid of finals or midterms. And what I'm seeing in a strategic plan is actually the enhancement. What we really looked and we've heard parents ask for for years is much more differentiation, diversifying how we learn. And I feel like the concern that we heard in the public tonight is the opposite of this goal. Am I, am I understanding this goal correctly? And I know Mrs. McCammon and Mrs. Stein were on the committee along with Mr. Tranberg. So tell me if I'm missing something, because I would like to address those parents' concerns and make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
No, I think that that's a good interpretation. And the idea of a strategic plan, this is over the next five years where we want to go. It's not about what decisions have already been made for the district and when are you going to tell us what we're doing. The importance is we have goals that we're going to work together to accomplish. It's not about the work that's already been done.
Chris, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. It made, we just couldn't hear you.
The other piece, what was the first part of your question?
Well, I look at this and, sitting in this room and being here for a long time, I've heard parents say, we need more differentiated learning. We need to make sure it's happening. We need to make sure our kids who are high achieving academically are being served and our kids who need support are being served and the middle's being served. So I read this goal as an attempt to really do that, to differentiate and to diversify our learning. And yet I hear the concern is that maybe we were rolling back rigor or we weren't, we were cutting back on what we were doing. I see this as doing it better and having a plan to how to do it better for each learner. And I think maybe if that's the case, and that's how I've always understood this goal, then we should explain that to address these parents' concerns.
Yes. And the other part to that is this, and I don't want to bleed too much into the other goals and into the D E I, but moving with intention and at an appropriate speed is important. And if, if ideas were already made and decisions were already made, they would have been brought to the board as a planned curriculum change. This is all about making sure the people who are closest to the work are doing the work. I don't write the curriculum. Our teachers are the actual creators of the curriculum. And the teachers don't make up curriculum out of nowhere. They're using the standards and frameworks that the state requires us to use in order to prepare, prepare our students. So that's the process that we go through. And when we talk about, well, words like, well, what does representation mean? Sometimes that means, okay, when we look at our classroom library, do we have books with students of different colors, of skin? Do we have students with learning differences represented? When we look at a book, do we have all of the students who are the antagonist antagonistic character are students of color? These have been real problems in children's literature. So that's something that you do to make sure you're representing and portraying accurately. It's not about anything other than that. It's making sure we are fairly representing the students that are in front of us and making sure we're aware of different perspectives. And a great example, the other day, someone was looking at a map and said, the map is wrong to me. I'm like, what are you talking about? The map is wrong? And the person said, there are seven continents and there are only five. There are seven continents on this map, but there's only five continents. I'm like, what are you talking about? There's seven continents. I've always known that there are seven continents. But when you look at global perspectives, much of the world looks at the world other than the United States as there are five continents, not seven. Doesn't mean I have to change my thinking and knowledge that there are seven continents, but it's helpful to know that much of the rest of the world sees five continents. And that's about perspective. And I don't need to change my worldview based on someone else's perspective, but it's helpful that I know it. And that's the idea of perspective in our curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Akin. Thank you. Mr. Tranberg, Mrs. Ritchie.
It's not really a question, just a statement. I just, I, and I don't remember where I read it, but someone said something, windows and mirrors. So the way we should look at it is it's a window and a mirror. You're looking at yourself, you're affecting yourself. But you're also looking through a window and seeing what else exists out there. And I thought that was really profound and important and I think embedded in this work. And I will tell you, if I thought AP classes were going away or midterms and exams were going away, I never would have supported this strategic plan. I've been calling for a more robust gifted program in this school practically since I got on this board. So I just want to make that clear. And I think maybe there is confusion about what this plan is. The plan has been discussed for two years now and it hasn't been a secret. It's been spoken about in public multiple times. It's been very transparent. So I think maybe we can give a primer to parents so they understand in a more simplistic form what the goals are. Because maybe this is a lot of information and people aren't digesting it all, but.
And I believe there's an update on gifted education in November, because we did launch the steering committee last week or two weeks ago.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I think it's important to also clarify too, because we had this discussion in public and at some other meetings too, about the organization that we used in Dr. Lemon, in that, yes, we all noticed and we were all made aware of stuff that was on those websites. And those websites changed over time. But Dr. Lemon was used as a facilitator to develop the strategic plan. And the strategic plan was really developed with his help and facilitating. How do you, how do you build a strategic plan mechanically? And what timeframe do you need? And how do you set up all the meetings? But the work, the values, the mission, everything was done with our students, our teachers, our parents, our board members, our superintendent, and was reviewed at the board level on a regular basis and was reviewed and questioned, you know, at various meetings throughout the strategic planning process. So I think we need to disconnect and we had that discussion. Dr. Allen, Dr. Adley, you know, reached out to, to Dr. Lemon, who he knows very well. And there was a discussion about that. It was brought up at various meetings I attended too. I thought it was explained pretty thoroughly. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dr. Adley? Yeah, Mrs. Akin.
Yeah, Mr. Dean, since that's come up again, I think we now have three board members. At the time, we had two. We now have three board members who sat in every one of those meetings, even during a pandemic. So thank the three of you very much, because I know they were long. Can any of the three speak to you? Did you have any concerns that what was quoted there and was on the website? And we, and we found out after the fact that was, was impactful or in any way affected our strategic planning process?
I will speak for myself. I will say that what Mr. Dean said about Dr. Lemon's involvement in the development of the strategic plan was exactly that. He was, he was the mediator and he was the one that helped us to organize our thoughts. He did not, in my opinion, did not share, he did not drive any of what is in our strategic plan. It came from the 27 people that were in the room. There were multiple parents from multiple different organizations in town with multiple perspectives. We all shared our, our views openly and honestly. The two students that were there were incredibly helpful and incredibly impactful in that experience. And I think Mrs. Stein was very vocal, Mrs. McCammon was very vocal in, in supporting it. And I think we, I have no concerns whatsoever of what this document is.
I would just, I'm not going to reiterate what was said. I agree with all. I would also say, remember, as a board, we then took ownership of it, right? And we put our stamp on it. We, some of us helped wordsmith the mission and vision statements. Like, we had multiple meetings where as a board, we vetted and made sure it was what we wanted outside of that committee. So I think all nine of us are, you know, equally responsible for, for its production. And now it's on us to make sure it's implemented properly. You know, I would say to the community members, our meetings can be long and they can be not so exciting, but they are transparent. And this has been, we've talked about a strategic plan more than just two years. We had talked about it with Dr. Brenner. We have talked about it for years. Dr. Adley came in and actually put it into action. As a board, we had been asking for it. So to the members who feel that they were left behind of our community, get on board now. Here are the goals. Here's how it's going to roll out. Speak up. You still have a say and a part in the process.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. I will add to that too. And I think it's, it's said in any number of these documents that it is a fluid document and things are going to change over time. And we'll continue to listen. The parents will continue to participate. The students will continue to participate. But it is a fluid, living document.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think we just cut off Mrs. McCammon.
Okay, sorry, Mrs. Akin.
Actually, I, I agree with, with what you just said and what Mr. Tranberg said, which is that what is actually most important is going forward. We've set a framework up with, you know, some work to be done, but there is, it's just beginning. So, you know, I think it's really important that we all be really actively engaged at this point going forward. So part of that will be, what does the conversation need to look like? You know, when, when do we, you know, we, we've got our actions. We'll start talking about measures. We'll start talking about next steps. And so I think, I think it's, 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 I'm late, but I, I think it's a framework and we're moving forward from here.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mr. Seeny.
Called you Luke. It's getting late. I want to look forward at this point, not reflect back of what might have, might not happen. I mean, throughout this document, we talked about partnering with PTO committees, community partnerships. We have a whole section on developing enhancing systems that promote effective communication. I mean, maybe we could have done a better job communicating, but I think from what we've heard tonight, hopefully our parent-teacher organizations can reflect on some of what they also heard tonight from people that typically don't get up and speak. And we can reflect on all of our parents and try to strive for these goals to communicate. Because I think it's what's going to happen is exciting. And the more people we engage, the better this plan's going to be and then the better the product's going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny.
If I may say that this is the, this is what I'm most proud of the work of the board in many ways. And it's, it's already starting to guide the district, the work of the 27 members, the support of the board at the time. That, that was critical. And this is bringing, beginning now to bring coherence. And the, all, all the things that we value, traditions and all, we built upon those. We value those. We celebrate those. There was a comment this evening about, I'm sorry, just lost my attention, but there was, there was a comment this evening that talked about this being non-inclusive and so on, so forth. Or as Ms. Akma said, getting away with A Ps and so on. I don't know where that's coming from. I do in the sense of it's out there in the media, but that's not, that's not what this is. There was excitement at the start of the year when this was rolled out with the staff and community. The, the staff is supporting this. When I go around the district, I see little, I went to like an elementary school in the classroom and you see the mission statement up on the wall and the kids are talking about it and what does it mean? So these things are beginning to come alive. And this is the work. And yes, it will be revised and modified as we go, but I'm particularly proud of the work that the board has, has engaged in. And we'll engage with other people along the way, but I'm excited about this and that this will guide our work over the next five years. And the idea of content, just because we are as good as we are, right? And the performance level, that doesn't mean to say we're not an organization of continuous improvement. That's all this is. And some of the priorities that the board had are, have been rolled into this. Anyway, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any other board comments or questions? And we'll let Mr. Tranberg continue.
Yeah, I'll move on to goal two, fostering a culture that promotes wellness, diversity, and inclusion. I'll be very brief on 2A because you just have a full presentation on social emotional learning. And the only point that I'll add, and I mentioned this last year too, there's kind of two lanes for social emotional learning. Sometimes you're stopping everything you're doing to have this moment of learning about a social emotional topic. Like, how do I have this conversation? How do I work with a peer? But the bulk of social emotional learning is about what's happening every day in every class as students are reflecting themselves and working with others in small groups. That's what social emotional learning is all about. And that's one of the challenges we faced as a result of coming out of the pandemic. Because not only were people very isolated, even when students were in school, they were isolated. It was hard to have them working in groups. So that's been a challenge. The other part is the D E I work. We are preparing to launch the D E I committee late in November, establishing that committee. And also, as I believe you're all aware, the PTOs and C D S P have D E I co-chairs at each school. So I've been in touch with them, kind of keeping them aware of what we're doing. And they have consulted with me a bit about the work that they're, they're trying to do again, just because they want to make sure we're moving at the same pace and with the same messaging wherever possible.
Any questions or comments on goal two? Chris?
Okay, with 3A, developing a balanced definition of student success through the portrait of the graduate. I'm going to, I'll state the obvious first. So in the strategic plan, it is called the portrait of the graduate. And then we later, the board approved the high school's presentation, I think it was our last meeting in June perhaps, and it's the vision of the graduate. It's like, okay, so why are there two different names? So number one, both names are relatively interchangeable out in education. And so the portrait of the graduate was the approved language at the time that this plan was approved. As the vision of the graduate committee was working, they realized that the vision of the graduate is the N I A S C language. And we have our N I A S C accreditation coming next year. It was important that that language aligned. So even though it's the portrait of the graduate, the way that the high school has expressed and reflected, the portrait of the graduate is through a document that was approved called the vision of the graduate. And this is, I keep saying the high school, and I know Ellen Dunn is listening and she's cringing right now because it's not the high schools, it's the district's vision of the graduate. And so we're working, one of the things that we have to do as a district, that's the expectation of the ask, is we embed the vision of the graduate, PK through 12. Because it's, you can't expect that all of a sudden in grades nine through 12, these six pillars are magically going to manifest themselves and be the vision of the graduate. It's something you work toward along the way. So the, one of the main goals of that was to complete it and that was done at the end of the year. And the other was in 3B, the conversations regarding the post-graduation survey. So there was a large interest and this did come from the board conversations. Can we do a better job hearing from the post-graduates to know how we actually did? So we started those conversations of trying to find a system to do that. And this is all coupling nicely with the N I A S work, obviously, because it's an expectation for our decennial accreditation.
Anything on goal three? Mrs. Akin.
Mr. Tranberg, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I believe a vision of the graduate or a portrait of the graduate was required by the state. So if people are saying, well, we didn't have one before, it's because it's now a new requirement that we do the work and that is why we did the work. Am I correct?
Yes, I will say that it's a good, if you remember the era of 21st century skills, it kind of evolved from 21st century skills talk to vision of the graduate. And it was, that was also a requirement of N I A S C. So N I A S C has been a big driver in making sure that, and again, it's about common language. These things exist. So when we talk about what expectations are, we're talking about them in the same way.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't putting a value judgment. I think Mr. Maroney and I have both been clear that we really valued this work. If I can speak for my colleague, we valued it very much, but it was also a requirement. So when people say, well, you didn't have one before, it's, it was great work. I believed in it. It, I think a lot happened that was really strong in our students we served with it, but we also needed to do it. And that's why you're seeing it now when you didn't see it five years ago.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. Did you say it was a N I A S C or a state or both?
It's a standard, it's a standard for N I A S C. So we have to have evidence of a vision of the graduate.
Okay, but not a state requirement?
Not to my knowledge, but I can confirm that.
Thank you.
But did they, the need, the need, I'm sorry.
No, can you clarify that?
I was just going to say the need, the N I A S requirement, stating the obvious for accreditation. I mean, that's tied to colleges, not everything else.
I was just trying to get, get the right definition.
My wrong word. Mr. Maroney, sorry.
No, I just echo what you said. I mean, we, we were in full agreement on the value. I think Mrs. O'Connor mentioned it in, in public comment of the value of the students and how rewarding that was. And, and the dialogue between the parents, students, alumni was, was brilliant. And it was very rewarding to be on the committee.
Thank you. Tranberg, we want to move on to goal four.
Our goal four is expanding, expanding the professional capacity of the staff. And I touched quite a bit on 4A and 4B, so I'll focus on 4C regarding attracting and retaining diverse educators. And this is part of state legislation regarding minority teacher recruitment. And one of the big steps the board supported last year were the partnership with C R E C. And we have two interning teachers this year who will be certified through the program at the end of next year. And it's something that we hope to continue in the F Y 23 budget. We're continuing our partnership with our R E S Cs. And there is eventually going to be a required plan for districts to submit, what are you doing for minority teacher and recruitment? And the other, under 4D, is initiating discussions with the, with DEA, mostly about mentoring. So we have a pretty firm state required process for, it's the team program for mentoring new teachers. But if you're a new teacher to the district who's not new to the profession, But if you're a new teacher to the district who's not new to the profession, you're not necessarily required to have a mentor. So we're looking at some opportunities to make sure they're feeling as connected through the onboarding process as well.
Thank you. Any questions on goal four? Move on, Chris, to goal, a strategy for goal five.
So for goal five, related to communication, we're continuing to have our board meetings in this, this form that we're in right now, where we have a hybrid setting so we can hear feedback. We've also revised our website for ADA compliance. So that work is continuing, but you've probably noticed some changes to our website as well. And we are using the Google platform more in our day to day with, so for example, our administrative meetings this year, they're all run through Google Classroom. So the administrators are experiencing how many students are experiencing accessing materials and meetings. So they're able to support teachers in that way. And regarding the guiding documents, I'll, I'll state the obvious again. The published document, which is in the packet and is now on the website, was one of our goals for year one. And also the language, again, I'm sorry to be so repetitive about it, but it's words matter. We're seeing that in, I'm sure you've noticed in our board presentations this year, you keep seeing the core values, the mission and the vision, and that's happening in schools as well, as well as school improvement plans. So every principal and our department leaders are creating their goals and their plans this year to make sure they're aligned with making these goals happen.
Questions, comments, goal five? Mrs. Ritchie.
Let me finish this. That beautiful book that you've created on the strategic plan, how are we, are we disseminating that to parents? How are they going to get that in their hands so that they can easily access it?
So right now, if you go to the, it's the Board of Education tab and strategic plan, it's an interactive, Michelle might actually be able to bring it up. And I will give a shout out to Michelle because all of the layout and design does fall in the hands of, of Michelle. And she's going to be mad that I'm calling her out on that, but she has, she has a great eye for it. So this is a feature, it's called Flipping Book. So when you go on the website and you click on those arrows to the right, you actually can flip through like it's a book. When you're, when you're printing something in color, it can be very expensive. I'm certainly willing to have a conversation to do that. It's just a matter of, of how many copies do we print in order to do that? But since we are pushing a digital platform for our students, I'm hoping we can maybe feature this and, and a communication, make sure everyone's aware that it's on the website.
I, I don't mean physical copies have to be in everyone's hands, just how they can get that and easily access it. So if there's some way to communicate to the parents and the community, this is on the website. Here it is. Please read it. Please engage in it, in the process and get to know the strategic plan and be part of its future development.
Okay, because if you told me you wanted thousands of something printed, I wouldn't recognize you.
Oh, that's not bad.
I guess I didn't mean physically in their hands.
I'll send that out Friday as part of my communication.
The copy center is closed. Mrs. McCavan.
Chris, the audit is mentioned in the memo is somewhere between year one and year two. Do we have a more precise date for when the audit of communication modes is planned?
Not yet. But, but it'll happen because it's in there.
Thank you, Mrs. McCavan. Move on to goal six.
Goal six is regarding facilities. So the big and obvious one here is Northeast Collaboratives completed the architectural evaluation. And we're moving forward with our building projects. And we're also working on the implementation of Alert Us. And we are still waiting on completion for that. And our old system is still in place until that comes to completion.
Questions, comments?
Oh, you're going, oh, sorry, sorry.
Goal seven.
Sorry, I had on the.
So goal seven is regarding technology and it's broken down 7A regarding instructional technology. And 7B is really the systems tech, technology and infrastructure. So there's so many things that have happened with technology. One was the development of the comprehensive technology plan, which you saw last spring, which was actually the first plan developed that aligns with this strategic plan because the strategic plan was approved at that time. Also establishing District Technology Council, so that committee met as well as the subgroups. We're trying to make sure we have functioning groups that are handling some of the challenges we face so we can answer questions quickly as possible and get answers to teachers. And we have the transition of those Chromebooks that are the Chrome tablets for K12 this year. So we are working through that transition as well. And under 7B, I'll point out the, a focus has been on the internet access and security and just faster connectivity, and that's been underway.
Questions, comments? Mr. Tranberg.
No, I think we're good.
All right, good. Thank you, everyone. We have nobody on the video, right? Thank you, everyone who's worked on it. We will move on to update on diversity, equity and inclusion. Dr. Adley and Mr. Tranberg.
So this is, this is another update that was, that was requested on our sort of regular basis. And you'll see in the master agenda, I've sort of put it on every other month, just as an update. I hope that, that, that's okay, because there's a lot of, there's just a lot of monthly updates that we're doing. So this is, this is a, a response to our intervention, our inter, or sorry, our intervention plan. And there were a variety of services outside agencies from ADL, NCCJ, another firm, social change in Boston. There were other programs that were looked at and reviewed by, in particular, the high school administration, the middle school administration, the central services administration. And we ended up falling on this particular model. And I'll let Chris talk just about the nature of it. But this, this starts, starting on next week, a series of interventions at the school level, at the town level, and also with our DEI committee level. And so Chris can talk about, we didn't set out to have one person, to be honest with you. But that's the way it played out in terms of what this person could actually bring. So Chris, do you want to sort of just talk about that? We'll talk about Mr. Shelton, Ken.
Sure. So this proposal is suggesting Ken Shelton from Elevated Education be our primary support to work with us this year for diversity, equity and inclusion. Just a few things about Ken without reading his bio. Ken has been an educator for many years and he spent years in the classroom before he moved outside into consultancy. And his consultancy is not only for schools, but it's also for boards of education, for universities and as well as corporate. Some of his recent, he's worked for districts as large as LA Unified, Parkland PA, Clark County Schools, which is one of the largest counties in the country, Chicago Public, and as well as many suburban districts similar to ours. He's also on the Google Educational Equity Board. He's been working with the California Emerging Technology Fund, Microsoft Education and several states' Departments of Education, as well as the Canadian Provincial Ministries of Education. He was one of our keynote speakers last year. So when we had those extra professional development days to open last school year, we started each morning with a keynote. And he did a keynote, he has a session on technology equity, which he calls tech equity. And he did the windows, mirrors and sliding glass doors. And he combined those two as the opening session and it was very well received by our staff. Since then, he's just been a, someone who can call when you're dealing with the situation. And I've stayed in touch with, so when these situations came up, he made a proposal. And when additional situations came up, he made more proposals. So initially, we had asked him to come and work with our diversity, equity and inclusion committee. But we also wanted to take an approach that was, I would say the big word for me is sustainability. When you're working, when you're trying to do this work, it is about making sure the work will last no matter who's in charge. So you want to make a shift in culture, not a shift in a moment of time. And so the, the first way to do that and the most important way that we can do that is through the leadership of our students. So the, the program is described briefly here, but it's identifying student leadership teams at the middle school and the high school. And he would work with them over the course of one day each and have some remote interactions. And then some school-based leaders and teachers would sustain that work over the course of the year. And he would come in and continue to, to support that moving forward. The other pieces to that, in addition to the students, and it's also not only those student leadership groups, but also thinking about athletics. I know it's a strange trivia fact that is in the memo, but he played football and tracked for UCLA as a college athlete. And that perspective is unique and important in, in the work that we're trying to do because a lot of what we've heard about the challenges we're facing, athletics is not absent from, from that. There's also a professional development plan for staff in order to do this. And also the work with the community. So we talked about those community conversations as well as some guided conversations for parents specifically related to DEI over the course of the year. So this is the plan as of right now. Initially, we were planning on a $23,000 expenditure to support the DEI work over the course of the year. And with the, the amount that we've increased, obviously, there's, there's going to be a greater expense.
So it doesn't preclude other things. So for instance, the ADL have been working with us and our colleague going to come into the middle school to do ASAP, right? I'll say call it an assembly type thing. It may not be in the full assembly, maybe split a little bit, but particularly around recent events. And they, they may well have a Holocaust survivor or the, the son or daughter of a Holocaust survivor. And so they're working on that and that's the recommendation that they would give at this particular point. So it's not going to stop other things being implemented simultaneously because we also have, we're also working with the triangle in, in Norwalk in terms of training and so on for, for staff. So those are other things that we're going to be doing. But this is a big overall sort of system to try and move us forward. And while it wasn't set out like this, there is a benefit of someone who's working with the town, the parent groups, the staff and the kids knowing each other and knowing, and knowing what we're about and what, what, what we're trying to accomplish together and actually knowing people and relationships.
Who will open up to board questions and comments? Mr. Seeny.
I, I would encourage anybody and everybody who's interested to search beyond his bio, to go on YouTube and watch one of his presentations, a pretty fascinating view of how he approaches this subject equity, but from a, from a view that I have not seen before. So yeah, again, I spent an hour and a half today doing some due diligence, but it was, is well worth that time.
I'll just, if I can add to Mr. Seeny's comment, that this, one of the unique approaches with working with someone like Ken is he's working with us as a consultant to support our goals. He's not coming in with a program that has its own goals. He's helping, he's saying, what are you trying to do? What's the work? And that's what he's going to help us do as, as a board, as a leadership team, as staff and as students.
Further board questions or comments? Mrs. Parent.
My island over here.
Sure.
So while I appreciate that this framework is, it seems well-rounded and we're, we're touching all the, the members of the community because this is, this is a community culture issue. This is not just a problem within our schools, this is a community issue. And I appreciate that this seems to be talking to everybody. What I am most concerned about right now is that our schools, particularly our secondary levels, are in crisis mode right now. And I'm glad to hear you say that this does not preclude the ADL coming in because I think that right, we need people in those schools now, tomorrow, next week. So I would just love to hear his plans. What is, what is the immediate plan to address some of these issues that are happening in our schools?
Well, the, the immediate plan, the ADL have been in the middle school before. Currently, the immediate plan is for the ADL to come in and do some sort of type of, I'll call it an assembly or group, that may not just fit by, by each grade level, but, but, but also that particular nature around the Holocaust and the offensive, defensiveness of, of the symbols that are being done and someone to talk to the kids from that particular perspective. That, right now, that, that, that's the next thing that we're trying to do, the most immediate thing we're trying to do at the middle school. And then this kicks in next week with kids at both the high school and middle school.
Mrs. Stein.
I, I read the proposal and it sounds like you vetted a bunch of other options. I think I would encourage this board, this is a big investment. It's a big undertaking to not meet with and have a conversation with this consultant prior to implementing. I think, I, I, I just don't support it, to be honest with you. I think it's too big of a challenge right now in our district. We have a lot going on and we need to understand if this person is capable of working in our district with our current issues. He's in California, which is not necessarily an issue. But does he understand lower Fairfield County, understand what's going on here in our district? I, I did some research, I found very little DEI, but Mr. Seeny sent me a video, which I, I am going to listen to. I think the board members should as well. But I would encourage you to really vet this person because we have major work to do. I would also ask, why is the ADL not going into the high school too? There's as much crisis up there as at the middle school and that needs to be addressed too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mrs. Akma.
So my question would be to try to understand, I do think this is an important investment. And I do think we need to find the right people coming in to help us. And I feel like I've been very clear about that. So I appreciate the administration steps here. My question would be, can you tell us more about, and, and I don't know if this is bringing the consultant in to talk to the board or if you can help with that. You know, where has he completed this process and how, how did it work? Does this plan, similar to where he's completed, that he's worked in these districts? Can we understand, can we understand a little bit more? And I, I want it to be unique and I don't want it to be pre-planned. But I, I also want to understand what's the process? You come in, you talk to us, what outcomes do we look to measure if there's success? I just don't feel like I have enough other than, it sounds like he's done good work. But, but how do I know that he's the right person, seeing that he's the only person to do this work here?
So I, I, I'd be quite happy and I think what Ms. Stein says, bring him, bring him here and have a discussion. That, that's fine. I think that would be a useful thing for, for the board because in all honesty, I get, the board needs to approve the expenditure because that's not, that's not.
Well, that's my second question.
That's not in the budget, but I would, I would intend that if, if the board, in many ways, the board's going to approve the person through the expenditure, one way or the other, right? So I'd be happy for the person to come here, but it's, it's important that, that we feel comfortable. But we also have to, we also have to approve the expenditure. So in November, I would be bringing forward a proposal to approve this particular expenditure through either the finance subcommittee and then the whole board. So we can, we can certainly provide an opportunity for Ken to talk to the board early on.
Just to follow up, sorry. Just to follow up on that because, let me tell you, I think if, if this gets the job done, it's money well spent. So I don't mean this from a, let's make a, you know, too tight of a fiscal decision. But just to be clear, we are looking for an additional, if this is the plan. Sorry, my computer, $56,000 that we're not budgeted for. So we would have to vote on this hire.
Correct.
Okay, so if we're going to vote, I want to interview. It could be my advice, just like we do for, for any other consultant that we hire. And that's no, Mr. Shel may be wonderful, that's not a despair, you know, not disparaging him.
Thank you, Mrs. Akma. Mrs. Ritchie.
I just want to echo and share the comments that have already been made and, and reiterate that the secondary, the high school level needs intervention sooner rather than later. I had sent along a Greenwich program that the ADL runs called Name Stay. And the people that I know down there have, I, I think they've done it for 20 years and it's been a great program for them and it's really worked. So I, I hope that's something you're also looking into. There's a lot of good stuff out there and I think we need the high school taken care of sooner rather than later as well.
And I do appreciate people's programs and on that particular program. I, I had a discussion last evening with the executive director of ADL. And actually, well, actually, he, he just left actually this past week. We have Christopher's had experience, I have experienced different experiences in schools with that program as, as has the high school. So there are scenarios where that works and there are scenarios where that's very difficult and causes other, other potential issues. So I, I really respect people passing along the programs and I would encourage you to continue to do that. But believe, believe me, they're being reflected on and discussed as to their individual merits and whether they're appropriate for what we need or not. There is a worldliness and sophistication here, both from our teachers, our parents, the board and our children. There are there are some that just just don't just don't match for different reasons and but anyway, I reiterate that I very much appreciate the the pass along of the resources and I would encourage you to continue to do that.
Any other board questions or comments around this? Mrs. McCammon?
Um, so I agree with a lot of what's been said in terms of interviewing. I think procedurally, we have to vote to hire them anyway. Plus, we have to vote for the budget. I so I certainly agree with that that process. But just to clarify, you outlined when we met at the end of September that there are sort of three phases that we need in terms of response. There was immediately strategically and townwide. So this really addresses the strategically and the townwide. But you have other plans for immediately. And I I think the board probably would like to hear that in a in a
Well, this is this is also starting immediately next week, right? With with November 2nd, with the staff and third with the kids at the middle school and high school. And he'll also be meeting with the the coaches. So that's that's immediate in that regard.
And we had already contracted him to support some PD and the DEI work. So if he's not the person that the board wants to support after that, we can make a shift.
Sorry, I just want to be clear. It's not that I'm not supportive of his work. It's just if the board's being asked to approve an additional expenditure, I would just like to meet the person I'm spending money on or I'm approving the expenditure.
And invariably, if it's not this person, it's another organization or we're going to have to have some sort of expenditure, but which I think we would understand. So.
So go ahead, Mr. Seeny.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we try to have a special meeting on this in between this and the next. And because I don't want to get the board in the way of progress here. And yeah, in a perfect world, I'd love to interview three or four people, but I want to use our, you know, professionals expertise in selecting somebody by giving us the opportunity to interview this person. But if it's I heard like we should
Yeah, no, I I appreciate it. It's late in the hour and this is important stuff. So if we could move in that direction, I would I would support that. I I think to Mrs. McCammon and a couple of other comments here. Immediate stretch strategic and with the town. I I would like to see something. I'm sorry to say this, but I'd like to see something tomorrow about the immediate. I heard from parents this week that the commitment meetings were same old, same old and kind of rushed through to get through them. We've got crisis going on at the middle school. We've got crisis going on at the high school. There's an immediate need and there are immediate action steps that I would like to see. And then holistically, and I think, you know, this is, this happens. And I think we've talked about it in the past with other projects and stuff like that. You're talking about ADL. You're talking about currently working with Triangle. I forwarded a name that I think Mrs. Stein forwarded to me. Deb's got a program there. I I need a bigger picture. I need a diagram of all these other organizations and how they can fit into the bigger picture and what they can do and how they can benefit the district. All right. It honestly, it's feeling piecemeal to me, which is okay, but the piecemeal has to come together. And I there's some immediate needs that have to be addressed. So.
So I recognize the immediate needs, Mr. Chairman. Some of those things may may fit that or they may not. This is this is an attempt to I understand we they're not mutually exclusive, so we have to continue to do immediate things. But this is an attempt to try and get out of this sort of like having to bring people in and try to get into a strategic way of dealing with it so that we're not in this mode all the time. And I know that's anyway, that that's the attempt of this this plan. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just think Mr. Seeny has a good idea. We could have a special meeting, have a conversation and make a decision to move forward.
Good. Thank you all. Anything else, Mrs. McCam?
No. Sorry.
One more chance. Thank you, everyone. Moving along, update on open choice.
So there was a wee bit of a discussion this evening about open choice that was mentioned. And this serves two purposes. One, the board did want to see this early on in the process because it potentially would become a budget budget rediscussion. And since there's at least a revenue discussion, it 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 does become a budget discussion. I want to recognize that Dr. Chip DeMay, executive director of CES is is has been patiently, I think he's paid, I don't know. I don't know if he's on or not. I think he is. And I think Eric is with him. I will say that on on this issue of diversity, equity and inclusion, there are certain signals that we do and we can talk around it. We've been like what you're sending me out. You're talking about some of this stuff, get get it done. This is the same with this, but this this issue or something like this issue. What we do versus what we say indicate what we value in many ways, right? And that just to me is one of those examples, the same way as the board supported the teaching residence program, which which, by the way, I wish you could come with me and meet these people and what they're doing. It's just a and the support that our staff has given to the to these particular staff, it's just a phenomenal thing that they watch. And the excitement from from the teachers. But this is another one for me where this is a this is a this is an action or a policy or small P practice that I would encourage the board to participate in. We showed this last year. We advocated for it at the State Department. Up to this point, we weren't part of the particular process. I'm going to go through, actually, you know, I'm not going to really
I think
You know, you've read this.
I will, I will go out to the board and think that everyone has looked through this. You've discussed it at the board table. I think we're very supportive of it. I'm excited about it. Eric and Charles, thank you for joining us, but I will turn it over to the board for board questions and comments. Mr. Seeny?
The 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 concept of filling classes in the kindergarten level. Walk me like walk through that and how that the mechanics work. And then are they with us day through 12?
The most the most successful way, once they enter your door that they are, once the students enter the schoolhouse, then they become our students. Right? So that's essentially the best way to for largely the best way to do it is for the for the children to be here as early as possible so they can be successful as possible. So so kindergarten would be primarily the grade that we'd be looking at paying. And that would depend on the right, right now, we were talking about 18 to 20 students dependent on the kindergarten enrollment. I mean, that's kind of what we would have to sort of look at.
And just so just to be clear, if we have to stretch a new teacher in third or fourth grade, there are students at that point. It's not like, sorry, we don't have any room. You have to go back.
I appreciate you saying that. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate that point of view. Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Seeny. Any other board? Mr. Maroney?
You said primarily kindergarten. Again, I think I asked this question. I don't recall the answer. Are we, if if we accept a kindergarten student, are we then taking on siblings if they if they're first or second grade of those students? Or are we only taking on kindergarten?
Well, that's that's a good question because of and and open choice and and I'll let Charles and Eric chip talk, talk about this moment. But another where this is implemented, it wouldn't be unusual where a family would say, hey, I've got a first grader or someone else is coming behind or or ahead, could they go? That would be a decision. I think we'd have to sort of do. Honestly, I would encourage the board to at least adapt a small P policy in terms of how we want to do this or how we might do this so that we address issues like that. Chip, do you want to say anything about that?
Sure. In general, the after the initial participation by a student, siblings who follow are given preference. But for the initial one, I think you're you're safe to say that starting a kindergarten would not obligate you to first or second graders to also participate.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman?
I I just feel compelled to correct a couple of facts that were said tonight. Open choice is not Hartford forced regionalization. It just isn't. It's been in the state of Connecticut for 50 years.
Correct.
There's been other voluntary attempts to do this. I participated in one myself. It was excellent. It is not busing. Busing is also proven to not work. So like, let's know what we're talking about. Open choice was supported in concept by this whole board. Our first selectman was supportive of it in multiple meetings. So this has also been talked about for a year. It's 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 not Hartford. It's Darian deciding what Darian wants to do. And to Dr. Adley's point, what we do says a lot more about, says a lot more about, sorry, you said it better, but I who we are than what we say. So let's just have the right facts on the table when we make a decision and let's not just put jargon on top of it. If someone doesn't know, ask a question, but let's not label things, especially a program that has been successful in Connecticut for 50 years. Something that it is not.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein?
Hi, Trip and Eric. Thank you for sticking with us so late. One question, and I asked this question when we discussed this as a board, but would love your perspective on it. How? It's one thing to have kids come in and go to school, but you know, Darian is a very tight knit community where kids participate in a lot of extracurriculars outside of the school day. It's part of the social fabric of our community. How have other communities handled integrating these students if they want into you know, soccer or theater or whatever it is extracurricularly? Is that something that you guys have dealt with?
Eric, go ahead.
And yes, absolutely. And we encourage that. We we want them to as was just said recently, we want them to be Darian students fully participating in all of the great opportunities that your programs offer. We do, and it is why you haven't been able to participate so far because a trip from Bridgeport to Darian is is untenable. It's unsustainable, especially with extracurriculars. But as the program is now expanding, I think it's a great opportunity for students in Norwalk to be able to participate in the full opportunities that Darian offers.
Okay, I guess I should clarify with Dr. Adley. A lot of our extracurriculars, particularly in the elementary and middle school, are not school based. They're town based. So could we engage in some conversations with the local youth groups? The more, you know, popular extracurriculars to get them on board and make them understand like this is something we're investing in as a school and we'd love your support as well.
I appreciate that advocacy. Thank you.
Makes a lot of sense.
I will also just, if I could just jump in with one more thing, we're in the process of hiring a family and community outreach person, coordinator, that that would be a perfect opportunity for that person to engage with the community and encourage this. So it's not just a Darian Public Schools enterprise, but it's a Darian Town enterprise. I think that's a great idea. Tremendous.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny.
Just easy question. How do they get back and forth from their community in Norwalk to Darian? Does the district provide transportation or is it is it family oriented?
The state provides transportation.
To their homes? Is it their
For kindergarten, yes, primarily.
Thank you.
Actually, transportation K-12 is pretty close to a home to school because of the number of students coming from communities.
Thank you.
Mr. DeMay, could you could you just chair with the board just really the final commitment process timeline or just just so we're aware? Like I'm aware, but I just wanted like.
Certainly. I think we're at a point right now where there's a critical mass for Norwalk, so we will be moving forward with this. We communicate to families right at the beginning of the new year in January regarding the application. The the drop dead date for having a firm number would be later in the spring. So we need a pretty good framework going into December. So we know what kind of community supports to put into place and we need to drop dead date numbers by Eric, I would say April or May.
We have it down. Our our dream date is March 25th. But that's a that's a dream. Many of our communities down here in the Bridgeport area are still finalizing numbers and don't let us know until after that. But let's say April 1st would be a target date.
Thank you. Mrs. McCammon?
This is related to an earlier question. But given that kindergarten numbers are notoriously so difficult for us to predict, Alan. How do we do effective planning for each year?
Well, certainly the enrollment report is is effectively the basis for this for next year. I would actually be looking at what my board actually projected for next year and the report that they had for us just over a year ago. So that would be the main thing because the one that is most volatile in all honesty is is kindergarten anyways, right? So so we just have to do that thoughtfully and collectively together.
Thank you.
As best as we can.
Anything else? All right, we good?
I want to thank Eric and Chip for hanging in there. I don't know what you heard and what you didn't, but thank you for standing up so so late. Thank you both.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. We're excited to be part of this and move it forward. And thank you for the board comments around this program.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Sure. We will move quickly through some great contemplated gifts. So I will ask the board, any questions or comments about the discussion and possible acceptance of contemplating a gift for the district music department? This looks like it is a generous gift of a piano that will go to Henley School with an appraised value of $2,000. Mrs. Bogat Trenko, I apologize if I said your naming correctly, is generously offered to donate a Baldwin console upright to the Darian Music Department. Any questions, comments? Mr. Brown?
Thank you so much for the generous gift. I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate that. Yes, just on behalf of the board. Please extend a big thank you. And we appreciate it. And Ms. Thompson, thank you. Anything you add to that?
Only that this is really needed and will help us delay needing to purchase additional pianos for the district. So this was very helpful and very welcomed.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Second?
Thank you.
Mr. Seeny, all those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you. We will move along to discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gifts for the high school football team. I know Mr. Manfredonia is on hold. This looks like it is a gift of 25,000 $25,195. In the memo, it clearly outlines where all the dollars are going to. So I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Mrs. Akman?
Just a quick question because it's such a large gift. I want to be clear that the athletic director, the director of finance and the superintendent have reviewed this and feel it appropriate.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Anything you wanted to add, Dr. Adley or Mr. Manfredonia?
No, I came forward because the cumulative value was over so that, you know, that's the reason matter for the board, but appreciate the support as always.
Okay, Mrs. Ritchie?
To clarify, there's nothing that's being donated that would have any budget implications. In other words, save the district money down the road.
Good question.
No, these are all nice to have to enhance the program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Do you have a motion to move this forward? Or go ahead, Mr. Seeny?
I was just going to say, remember, this was a team that didn't have a season last year, so they missed the fundraiser.
Great point. Great point. Thank you. Mr. Brown, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to say thank you so much to the parish's generous donation and make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I would say thank you to the list of parents and business that is listed. Thank you very much for the generosity and for enhancing our students on the football team. Second, Mrs. Perrin, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Let you gel notes, Dean, from that one.
Who did?
Who is Seeny abstaining?
Okay, Mrs. McCammon is abstaining. Thank you. Mr. Seeny is abstaining. Got it. Thank you. Thank you again, Chris, and thank you, everyone that might be listening. That's a donor. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
We will move along to discussion on September financial report and possible action. We've got a budget committee, a budget committee, a budget meeting, budget committee meeting on Monday. I will turn it over quickly to Mr. Roodel.
Or just wait for it to come up?
The report for September, as you can see, we are forecasting a year end positive balance of 170,401. The general education RC is a positive 242,000. Special education RC slight deficit of 62,000. And then the COVID RC is slight deficit of 9,000. COVID expenditures, as I mentioned, are about 9,008. We do have grants total of just over a million. So we anticipate spending being just over a million, a million, 34,000. Salaries are a positive variance of 144,000, primarily from savings and turnover of $25,000. YMCA overtime of 34,000 and a portion of budget control that remains unused at 43,000. Operating costs have a slight negative variance of 14,377. The negative variance is primarily due to contracted speech with negative variance of 78,000, which we do have some transfers for the board's consideration, and then the COVID transportation costs of 9,008, which is a deficit. Fixed costs are showing a positive 57,000, primarily from utilities, which are forecasted at a positive 41,000. Property insurance, workers comp and general liability insurance also show small positive savings as well. Revenue is a slight negative balance of $16,747, and that is primarily from ELP tuition. So as I mentioned, we do have three transfers for consideration. The first is for $9,008. This would extinguish the deficit in the COVID RC budget. This is from mandatory cleaning from our out of district transportation providers and the funding would come from a favorable Kermer renewal and property insurance. The second transfer is for $37,125 to contracted speech. We did see a price increase from one of our speech providers of 12 and a half percent. So we are recommending take with savings from YMCA overtime and some teaching supplies. And then finally, $41,000 from contracting speech as well. We do have a speech provider who is out on a long term leave of absence. We were not able to fill that with a long term substitute and instead are filling that with a contracted speech provider.
Thank you, Mr. Roodel. There were some good questions at the finance committee table that were answered. Any additional questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie.
I just want to thank Rich and Dr. Adley for their renegotiation of the agreement with the Y because obviously those cost savings that we realized are helping to offset some unexpected price increases. And we should look forward to another little bit of savings because the Boys and Girls Club is no longer needed. So there'll be another $4,500. And so thank you for that. Good work.
Mrs. Ackman.
So I just would like the board to keep an eye on that long term sub account. Last year we doubled that account. Right now we're being asked, and, and I'm not saying it's inappropriate now, but I think it's an account we should watch. We're asking to be transferred out of that account. So we do think that it's unusual at this time of year to be doing so. That account generally can be stressed. So if we're moving money out now, we should keep an eye on that account throughout the year.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. I will also note there was a conversation and as usual, Rich has good spreadsheets in here. There were some questions from our friends at the RTMF and B, but Rich has done a good job of tracking in great detail damage to equipment and property for Storm Elsa and Storm Ida. We've already been through the Board of Finance once on replacement of chucks that we desperately need. That's in process. But all of this is in process from an insurance standpoint and we have to submit our claims along with the town since we're a joint policy holder on the insurance. So just an update on that. Mrs. Ackman.
Sorry, one other thing just for the board to note, as the finances go forward, we moved some services into our grant accounts. So as we go forward and we're looking at predicting excess costs, you can't ask for excess cost reimbursement and have those services in the grant. We talked about it at the finance meeting and the district said they are tracking that carefully to make sure that that is not happening. But as we go along with our conversations about excess costs, reimbursement and budgeting, I think the board should be aware of what's in the grant, what services are in the grant and what is an excess cost.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to approve the September budget transfers? Mrs. Stein, second by Mr. Sini, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving along to discussion and possible action on the ed specifications for the Royal School Roof Replacement Project. Mike, thank you for staying with us. Do you want to give just a quick update on this? This is kind of a standard process we go through on these larger capital improvements and renovations.
Sure. This is the.
Do you speak up a little louder, Mike?
Let me see if I can up my audio.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
The, it's a standard form from the, the State Department of Education for roof projects. And it takes the place of the big book ed specs that we do for the larger projects. And it, it's identical to the form we used at Hinley and Holmes. And as part of the grant process, the Board of Education has to approve the ed specs. And then this will go on to the Board of Selectment for them to pass a motion approving the ed specs.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Questions, comments from the board? It may have a motion to approve the ed specs for the Royal School Roof Replacement Project. Mrs. Ackman, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move next to discussion and possible action on capital budget transfers to complete the copy center project. This was also a discussion at the finance committee meeting. Dr. Adley, do you want to give a quick update?
Well, the, the essence of it is that the, the quote come in significantly over budget from 135 to 322. And the proposal here was to take the balances of the capital projects that we're not doing and including the, the carpets at, at the various schools to make up that balance to actually execute on the project itself. And there was, there was, there was discussion at, at the finance committee where it might make more sense not to do this project upon, upon reflection. So I'll leave it there and let other members of the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I think there was good conversation and I think there's no immediate need. I think in some ways, waiting to see where the market calms down in terms of product and supply stuff, not getting caught up in starting the project and not being able to finish it. And then I think looking at a bigger picture of we move the copier downstairs, we have this back room. There's a room there that is not really utilized. We need to do a better job with our video conferencing. So is there a bigger project that we can have the facilities committee look at and not just move the, the copier center down? Rich also knew that, you know, overall copying is decreasing, so that's good. But that was kind of the conversation at the finance committee meeting. I'll open it up to further questions. Mrs. Ackman.
So I agree. I would just say at this time, given that the scope of this project has grown, I'm not sure that I'd use up all these leftover capital funds on this project. It sounds like we might need to re-scope it and, and understand really how to go at, at $117,000, which is what we budgeted. I think that, or sorry, that's the balance of that. But, but we're, we're almost doubling the project. And so I would say that it would be good to pause at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mrs. Ritchie.
Yeah, I think that was the sense of the committee that, and for the board as a whole, to consider that we're not putting the kibosh on the project, but given the price tag came in so much higher than we anticipated, it might be a good opportunity to rethink the project and perhaps get more space to the technology people that are stuck in that closet and just rethink a little bit of, of other things that are going on. So it might be an opportunity and given the way supplies are right now, it might be aggressive to think that we could finish, finish the project before fiscal year end anyway. So it might be better to, to just maybe push it down to facilities and have them.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. I would recommend that we move it to the facilities committee for next month. All right. Any other further conversation, discussion? All right, great. We will move forward, discussion, possible action on board master agenda for August 2021 through February 2022. I will open it up for any questions or comments.
The only comment I'd make, Mr. Chairman, is, is the DEI, but I just want to be very clear that the updates on those I move to every other month. Just, it, just every month just seems a lot.
Okay. And if need be, we can always do a special meeting. Mr. Sini.
The, the topic that Jill and I brought up last week about adding, thinking about adding a week for the ed cut discussion after the public comment. I mean, again, it's, it's ways off, but I don't know how it fits the calendar there.
Yep. Yeah, I think we should incorporate that in.
I don't know where the 15th or where February.
So I'll, I'll work with Dr. Adley and, you know, get board feedback on how that budget calendar works.
Well, you want to incorporate the discussion to make the decision, correct?
I want to add a week. I, I think what Jill and I brought up, we want to add a week between February 1st and February 8th.
So I'll, I'll, I'll look at the agendas going out. We'll see if we can add a discussion around it just so we all understand and we're all clear with the budget calendar. And if need be, we can have the discussion and possible action of incorporating that in there. All right. Good.
Just don't want to run into the same issue.
Yep, understood. Good. Do we want to move forward and a motion to approve the board master agenda for August 2021, 2022? Mrs. Ackman, second by Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Further discussion and action on the adjustment to the 2021, 2022 calendar for Hinley School makeup days. I think we had this discussion. Any further discussion around that? If not, I'll move to motion to use two professional development days, Friday, January 14th and Friday, February 18th is half days for students and half day professional development days for staff. Motion to accept that. Mr. Maroni, second by Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to discussion on the High School Stadium Lights Agreement. Dr. Allen, Mr. Sini brought up that this was coming to its expiration. It's really to put it on the table for further discussion. I would suggest everyone reads through the agreement. We had one of the neighbors speak this evening, which I appreciate. But I think there's some discussion to be had. There's possibly some decisions to be made. So the agreement is there and we'll put it on for further discussion shortly. So we can have that dialogue before it expires. Mrs. Ritchie, are you leaving us? Thank you so much. Take care. Thank you. If everyone's in agreement with that, or if anyone wants some discussion around it now or additional information, I'll open it up. Mr. Sini.
Just real quick, I, I think it's important that we have a discussion with council on this as well.
Yes.
You know, unfortunately, there's a standstill agreement that, you know, we should fully understand if we do want to move forward and make changes or not.
So I'll, everyone read it, come back with their questions and then we'll actually look for the right counsel to be present to kind of go over what can, can potentially, what conversations can be had. So the good news, I don't know if you, quick update, Alan, you reached out, which is part of the agreement, had conversations with the neighbors, which we appreciate.
I think Paul is still, still on the line there. They have been, they have been good neighbors and been very cooperative and very, also supportive of, of the program. I think it's probably fair to say that ideally, our neighbors would like the security of another, whatever they agree, whatever it is, whether it's the same modified, another five year period. So it gives them the, the, not the unexpected see of, of any given time has changed. So.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to personal items, appointments, resignations and retirements. Marge?
The two teachers are the ones I mentioned at the last meeting and an additional special education power professional design.
Great. Thank you. Motion to approve the PAR, Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Ackman. All in favor? That is unanimous. We will move back to public comment. Anyone in person? Mr. Burke?
Very, very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
I, I wanted to come here and officially welcome Katie Stein and Deb Ritchie to the newly formed Board of Education Alumni Association, which they'll be joining in a very few moments. Thank goodness they're coming because we can certainly use all the help we can get. But seriously, I did want to honor, come here and honor their extraordinary ser, service. Darien owes them a great debt of thanks. It was my privilege to serve with both of them for a period. I can tell you from personal experience that their votes were never influenced by party or ideology, but rather their sole principle was what was in the best interest of all of our children. Their energy, faith and devotion, which they brought to their volunteer roles, brought educational excellence and hope to thousands of our children. For Katie and Deb, creative thought was always what mattered most. Though this is a public school setting, I don't think anyone will mind if I finish by paraphrasing St. Paul and say of Katie and Deb, they have fought the good fight. They have kept the faith. They have finished their course.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Mr. Burke, I hate to ask for your address after that lovely.
I was gonna say 1313 Mockingbird Lane. It's almost Halloween, right?
Lori Olson, 16 Little Book Road North. I am not going to cry. I am just going to say, thank you for speaking tonight about the urgency at the middle school and the high school. The community thanks you. We look forward to hearing more, but I also just want to remind everybody that maybe we include parents and we have some tools and resources to continue the conversation at home.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Anyone else in our current presence? Then we'll thank you. We'll move over to Zoom in our virtual presence.
We have one raised hand, Ms. Diane Urban. You are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to keep you later. I appreciate all of you weathering through, but I just wanted to comment that I hope that many of the parents who voiced their concerns at the beginning of the meeting did stay on to hear how clearly it was articulated that you all put so much plan, planning and thought and effort into the strategic plan and the vision of the graduate and the students and the parents that have been involved and will continue to be involved. I hope that, that allays some of the fears that this is something that is to be hidden and I appreciate the continued transparency. And then I just wanted to comment on the general idea of a pause because for many in the community, it's been paused for too long. And I appreciate Mr. Janine's comments that there's a need for an immediate action. These instances keep happening. Every time I have a conversation with my kids and the fact that I have to say every time is really a pretty scary thought. So the kids, if, if you need to go back and listen, anyone to the last Board of Ed meeting when kids were asking, pleading with us to do something, you know, it's just, it reiterates that we as a community need to say that we do not tolerate hate and we need to start acting. So that's it. But thanks again.
Thank you very much for your comments. Have a good evening.
You too.
Oh, Diane, could you just give us your address again, please?
Yep. 10 Crane Road.
10 Crane. Thank you. Michelle, any other guests?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Great. Thank you all for the board conversation. Thank you, the public in person and on Zoom for the conversation. Much appreciated. Get home safe. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Katie. I know Deb's listening in her car, so.